Hello, everyone. Welcome to the regular Flagstaff City Council meeting. Today is Tuesday, November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty. It's approximately three o'clock, and I'd like to call this meeting to order, provide notice to everyone listening that we have the right to recess into executive session as the Flagstaff City Council for legal advice should we so choose to do so. At this particular time, can we please have roll call?
Mayor Evans.
President.
Vice Mayor Shimonie.
Present.
Councilmember Aslan.
Present.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Present.
Councilmember Odegaard.
Present.
Councilmember Salas.
Present.
Present.
And Councilmember Wieland.
Present.
Thank you. At this particular time, Mr. Odegaard, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Odegaard. Ms. Salas, would you please read our mission statement?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm honored to do so. The mission of the State of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Thank you, Ms. Salas. At this particular time, we're down to item number four. This is for items of public participation. Ms. Halsberg, do we have items for public participation?
Yes, Mayor, we do have one public participation, and that is Nicole Antonopoulos.
Just before we get started, to remind everybody who's listening and counsel, because the item is public participation, it has not been agendized. While counsel can listen and receive input, because it has not been agendized per law, we cannot respond to what we might hear. Thank you so much. Ms. Antonopoulos.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Counsel Nicole Antonopoulos, Sustainability Director. I am pleased to share some news with the council and the community. Flagstaff has recently been named one of eighty-eight global cities named as climate leaders from the international nonprofit Carbon Disclosure Project as the 2020 A-list. And this is for Flagstaff's efforts in climate action by environmental impact efforts. And I'm pleased to say that Flagstaff started reporting our greenhouse gas emissions to the Carbon Disclosure Project in two thousand and fifteen. And this is the second year that Flagstaff has been recognized for our efforts. And again, we are one of eighty-eight communities internationally that are being recognized for our efforts. So I want to congratulate the council and the Flagstaff community on this recognition.
Thank you. Are there any other? There's nothing else for public participation. Is that right, City Clerk?
That is correct. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We're now down to appointments. This is item number five on our agenda. We do have many appointments to make tonight. The first one would be five A. This is consideration of appointments to the Airport Commission. Staff's recommended actions that we make one appointment to a term expiring October, two thousand and twenty-three. I believe that I have the council assignment for this particular item. I'd like to go ahead and appoint Cal McLoy to the Airport Commission for a term expiring October, two thousand and twenty-three. Is there a second for that?
This is Charlie, a second.
Okay. There's been a motion made for myself, by myself, a second by Mr. Odegaard. Is there any further comments on this? I'm not seeing any. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, I believe that motion does carry. Thank you. Next up would be five B. This is the consideration of appointments to the Housing Commission. We have six such appointments to make. I'm going to start with Mr. McCarthy. The first appointment would be to a community representative seat for a term expiring September, two thousand and twenty-one.
Mayor, I guess I have a question.
Yes.
Am I limited to that particular seat? Or can I appoint someone to, for instance, the developer seat?
So, Mr. McCarthy, we're going to take this in the order that we're listed. The very first appointment up would be you. That would be for a community representative seat.
Mayor, I am not prepared to do that. And I apologize to the council. I thought that I was, could appoint to any one of the different ones. So I would like to table this until the next meeting or the second next meeting.
What I will go ahead and do, Mr. McCarthy, is I will skip you. I will go ahead and continue on with the individuals who are listed to see if they are ready to make appointments in the order that they are listed. And then I'll come back to you. Would that work?
Come back to me, not today, because I'm not prepared.
Okay.
In other words, hopefully, we could do something similar to what we did on the Airport Commission. We made appointments a couple of weeks ago, and then you did one tonight.
Okay. Let's go ahead then and move on to Councilmember Wieland. Councilmember Wieland, you would be making one appointment to a community representative seat for a term expiring September, two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you, Mayor. After speaking to staff as to attendance and preparedness of current members and speaking to the new applicants, I, it would be my honor to nominate Joanna Wheeler as a community representative
Is there a second?
For two thousand and twenty-three.
Is there a second for that?
I'll second that, Jim McCarthy.
So there's been a motion made by Ms. Wieland and a second by Mr. McCarthy to appoint Joanna Wilton, Wilton? To a Wheeler, I'm sorry. Wheeler.
I'm sorry, Weaton.
Joanna, to a appointment to a community representative seat for a term expiring September, two thousand and twenty-three. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I believe that motion carries. Thank you. We are now going to go to Councilmember, excuse me, Vice Mayor Shimonie. Vice Mayor Shimonie, you are making one appointment to a building and real estate professional seat, a realtor seat, to a term that would be expiring September, two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you, Mayor. Is this the first time we're doing it like this, where we have a specific order?
We have always done the appointments in order.
So I feel like in the past, there's been more flexibility to the seat you nominate to, but maybe I'm mistaken. Regardless, so I think I was, I was hoping to nominate Sandy Flores to this seat. I believe she qualifies. Is that correct?
You are looking to appoint someone to the realtor seat.
Okay, and?
Yes, she qualifies.
I believe she does qualify for that seat. And I just want to let Mayor and council know that I'm flexible. So if there's someone that would better fit the seat, and that, you know, we can put Sandy in a seat that's, you know, tradable, for instance, I'm happy to do that. But I nominate that we appoint Sandy Flores to a seat, a term expiring September, two thousand and twenty-three, as a realtor seat on the commission.
I'm going to go to our City Clerk, because I think that needs to be clarified. City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to go back to the Vice Mayor's question about the process that we've done in the past for board and commission appointments. Generally speaking, we have not limited it to the order that's listed on the agenda. It has been in the past open to whatever order. But as the, as you oversee the agenda, I defer to your direction. I just wanted to clarify that process.
You know, and I want to apologize, because the way I have normally done this is I start at the top when it comes to council appointments, and I take the people who are listed, the council members, in order as their names are listed, which is why I'm calling it out this way. That is how I have historically done it. And so.
And Mayor, you are correct. We will, we take the council members in order as they're listed. But the specific seats have not typically been taken in order, per se. But the council member rotation stays the same.
Okay, so in understanding that, once we get done with Vice Mayor, I'll go back to Mr. McCarthy and see if that changes the way he would like to participate.
Okay, thank you. And yeah, Mr. McCarthy, if this does somehow throw off your intention, let me know. I'd be happy to, you know, let you go first. And thank you, Stacy. That's my recollection as well. So yeah, I nominate Sandy Flores to the seat expiring two thousand and twenty-three.
Is there a second for that?
Seconded.
Mayor, I think Mr. Shimonie needs to designate what type of seat that is for.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. It's a realtor seat.
Thank you.
Okay, so there's been a motion made by the Vice Mayor and a second by Ms. Wieland for Sandy Flores. She is going to be appointed to the realtor seat that expires September, two thousand and twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three. Is there any further comment? I see a comment by Mr. Odegaard.
Right, Mayor, this is City Attorney Sterling Solomon. I think the mayor needs to, or, sorry, the Vice Mayor needs to withdraw his motion and make the motion over again specific to that seat.
Okay. Vice Mayor, can you withdraw your motion and remake it?
Yes, I withdraw my previous motion, and I would like to make an appointment.
Before you make it, I apologize. Okay, so before you make the motion, I believe that I mentioned that I did not think that she fit the realtor seat. And it seems as if the clerk might agree with that. So I'm wondering if you have the actual documentation in front of you, Vice Mayor, so you could make her appointment to the appropriate seat.
Mayor, this is Stacy.
Go ahead, Stacy.
The City Clerk, I can share the categories that were listed in the staff summary, if that would be helpful.
I think that might be helpful.
Okay.
Ms. Wieland, did you have a comment?
Yes, Mayor. I believe, reading her application, there, there was some mention as to why she would fit that seat with her extensive experience in low-income housing, heading up the front door program along with Flagstaff Shelter Services. So her name, I believe, should fit.
I believe that she applied under a different category, which is what the issue is. Perhaps the City Clerk, there we go, the City Clerk could share that?
So Mayor, it does look like she had applied specifically for the building and real estate professional seat and not specifically for the realtor.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead, and I'm actually going to go back to Mr. McCarthy. That way, the Vice Mayor can, you know, consider this particular appointment. Ms. McCarthy, I apologize. And so I'm going to go back to you and see if you have an appointment to make.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I was intending to make an appointment for real estate professional slash developer. Do we have an opening for real estate professional developer? I thought we did. And can Stacy answer that question?
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. I apologize. I was trying to pull those seats up. Yes, we have a developer, so a building and real estate professional developer seat to fill that would expire in September of two thousand and twenty-three.
So my understanding then is I could make an appointment or nomination to that slot right now.
Yes, you can.
All right. I would like to nominate Chris Kimberley to the real estate professional developer seat that expires in September of two thousand and twenty-three.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, there's been a motion made by Mr. McCarthy and a second by the Vice Mayor to appoint Chris Kimberley to the position of building and real estate professional slash developer for a term that expires in September, two thousand and twenty-three. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Mayor. I would like to, thank you. I would like to bring up that Mr. Kimberley is a current member of that commission. Out of ten meetings, he has attended twice. And for one of those meetings, for only a twenty-minute period, I believe this commission deserves someone who will be attentive, prepared, and ready to work hard for these issues. So I disagree with this appointment.
May I respond to that, Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McCarthy. Ms. McCarthy?
I've talked to Mr. Kimberley. Incidentally, it's K-E-M-M-E-R-L-Y. And he skipped some meetings that he felt were not related to his area of expertise. And of course, he is a developer. And when we start talking on the commission about the things that we can do to encourage developers to build more houses, which is one of our primary goals, I believe that he will be involved. So it's my judgment that it would be good. But I also respect Ms. Wieland's comment that he has skipped quite a few of the meetings, and I acknowledge that. I haven't verified that, but I assume that her comments are valid. So anyway, I want to, I will stay with the nomination and leave it up to council if they want to confirm. Thank you.
And Mr. McCarthy, I'm not so sure that that is that ability to pick and choose, especially for this commission, is it of an individual's, you know, doing. I think this is a commission. It has appointed full membership, and they work as a commission. So again, I, I respect what you're saying, but I disagree that twenty percent attendance, whether we're experts on the topic or not, is just not good enough for this commission. Thank you.
So you make some valid points. I mean, since I've been on council, I have never missed a meeting of any commission or, you know, mountain lion or whoever that I represent. So there's some validity to your comments. Thank you.
So I'm going to move on to Mr. Aslan. Do you have a comment for this?
Yeah, I just wanted to weigh in. And respectfully to Councilmember McCarthy, I have to agree with Councilmember Wieland that, you know, one of the only rubrics we can really take stock of is attendance. There's a few others, but attendance is a big one. And I think this, this commission, I think if you're sitting on this commission in good faith, you're, you're on it for the entire journey. You're in it for the long haul. And you're there as an expert in your realm to provide feedback and advice and consent on everything that the commission is doing, not just the things that are only relevant to your one area of expertise when they, when it, when that happens to be agendized. So I will be voting no on this recommendation.
All right, and I absolutely respect that. Just a matter of process. If we vote on this and we get a failure, then I will get a chance to nominate a different person, hopefully, like in two weeks.
I'm not sure that that's how that works. We'll go back to the City Clerk and ask her to verify that.
Thank you, Mayor. If, if your selection does not receive the support, you do have the opportunity to make another appointment if you would like, or you can ask to come back at a later time.
Thank you.
So we're going to go to Ms. Salas.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, just for, for clarity, and I would lean on our City Clerk and City Attorney. Don't we have some kind of guidelines or rules and/or attendance requirement for commission members in our books or rules?
Thank you, Councilmember Salas. Yes, there are some guidelines listed out in our Rules of Procedure for our seated commissioners. And it is up to the council to, if, if there are commissions that are having, you know, challenges with commissioners not attending and they're having issues with quorum, they can recommend a removal to the city council. And the city council then has, you know, obviously, they're, they're commissions, and they have the authority to remove commissioners as they deem necessary. But it's not an automatic removal, if you will. It would be something that we would bring back to the council for consideration.
I have a follow-up, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. So there's no specific attendance requirement for, for commission members?
Not specifically. It does lay out the recommendations and that if a commissioner were to miss, and I apologize, because I don't have the handbook directly in front of me, but I believe it's if they miss twenty percent of the meetings within a one-year period, they could be considered for removal from office.
Thank you so much, Ms. Halsberg, and thank you, Madam Mayor.
No, I just wanted to make a comment. I believe, if I'm correct, this was one of the most hardest positions that we had to fill when we originally filled this commission, was that of the developer seat. I'm not sure how many developers we currently have on this commission, if we have one seat or two. But I would just stress that I do think it's important that we have a developer on this commission. As moving forward, I really think that it's going to be the viewpoint, or at least some of the knowledge that our developers have, that are actually going to help address the issues that we have with regards to housing in our community. You know, Mr. McCarthy, you have recommended this individual, and I believe you're currently the liaison to the Housing Commission. Should this motion go forward and pass, I would highly recommend that you reach out and that you continue to reach out and stress the importance of having the voice of a developer on this commission and do what you can to make sure that the individual is at all of the meetings, because I do think that attendance is, is critical if we're going to actually come up with a plan to address housing that includes everyone's voice.
I will absolutely do that, Mayor, and that, and I totally agree that that makes sense.
If there's no more comments, I believe we had a motion by Mr. McCarthy and a second by the Vice Mayor on this particular item. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
So how, how many were opposed? Can you please call out your name for us, please?
Wieland.
Aslan. And Solis. I believe Ms. Salas indicated she was opposed as well.
So were there three?
Yes.
Okay. And I would be counted as a four, so I believe that that motion carries.
So Mayor, I will definitely talk to Mr. Kimberley about the issues that have been discussed. And I absolutely respect the dissent in this case and don't have any strong argument with it. So I will follow through.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to go back to the Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor, so you are going to be appointing someone. And I would ask that you verbalize what you have put in the chat. Do you have a motion to make?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make an appointment. I'd like to appoint Sandy Flores to a building and real estate professional seat under the any seat on our agenda, but as other, of which she qualifies for. And that term expiring in two thousand and twenty, September of two thousand and twenty-three.
Is there a second?
This is Charlie, a second.
So there's been a motion made by the Vice Mayor, a second by Mr. Odegaard, to appoint Ms. Sandy Flores to the building and real estate other professional spot, to, to a term that would expire September, two thousand and twenty-three. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. I believe the next appointment is for me. I would like to go ahead and appoint to the community representative seat for a term expiring September, two thousand and twenty-one. I am going to spell the last name of the individual, because I do not know how to pronounce it. This is a new applicant. This would be P-A-R-A-F-I-N-I-K. City Clerk, could you help me with that pronouncing, pronunciation?
Paraphinuk, perhaps? I'm sorry.
Paraphinic.
Excuse me?
Paraphinic.
Paraphinic. Would that be a Mr. Paraphinic or a Ms. Paraphinic?
It would be a Mr.
Mr. Thank you. I'm looking for a second on that.
And Mayor, I'm glad you chose that, and I'm a second.
Okay, there's been a motion made by myself and a second by Mr. Odegaard for Mr. Paraphinic to be appointed as a community representative, a new applicant, to the community representative seat that expires in September, two thousand and twenty-one. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, a City Clerk, for assisting me with that, as well as Ms. Wieland with the pronunciation. Mr. Odegaard, I believe you're up next.
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to nominate Eric Davis to the building and real estate professional slash realtor seat for a term expiring September, two thousand and twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion made by Mr. Odegaard and a second by the Vice Mayor to nominate Eric Davis in the building and real estate professional realtor category. He's a current commissioner to a seat, a term that would expire September, two thousand and twenty-three. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, this is Austin. I just wanted to take a quick second to say to the City Clerk, I appreciate you putting the screen up to share with all of us and for the public. I think that was very helpful. It may not be necessary with other commissions, because they're not so complicated as this, but it's nice to see that up there.
Any other comments? All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we're now down to item number five C. This is a consideration appointment for the Sustainability Commission. First up, we would have Mr. McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. I nominate David McCain to the Sustainability Commission for a term that would expire October, two thousand and twenty-three.
I second that. Go ahead.
Thank you.
So there was a motion made by Mr. McCarthy. I believe the second person came from, or the second came from Mr. Aslan?
Yep.
Okay, and that would be for Mr. Dave McCain, who's a current commissioner, to be appointed to a term that expires October, two thousand and twenty-three. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. We are now down to Mr. Odegaard.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I would like Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I would like to nominate Kevin White. To one appointment for the term expiring October twenty twenty-two.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Mr. Odegaard and a second by Mr. McCarthy. To appoint Mr. Kevin White, who's a current commissioner, to a term that expires in October twenty twenty-two. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries, thank you. Mr. Aslan?
Yeah, well, thank you, Councilmember Odegaard, for leaving one of those seats open for twenty twenty-three. It is with a lot of enthusiasm that I would like to nominate John Daly for that position. Expiring in October twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion made by Mr. Aslan and a second by Mr. McCarthy. To nominate John Daly to a term on the Sustainability Commission that expires October twenty twenty-three. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, thank you. Thank you, City Clerk, and thank you, Council, for helping to assist me get through. Those appointments, I do appreciate that. We are now down to our consent agenda. This is item number six. Is there a motion for a consent agenda as written? Counsel?
Uh, this is Charlie, so move.
Okay, there's been a motion made by Mr. Odegaard and a second by the Vice Mayor to approve our consent agenda as written. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion does carry, thank you. We're now down to routine items. This is item number seven. Seven A, consideration and adoption of Resolution Number twenty twenty dash fifty-nine and Ordinance. Number twenty twenty dash twenty-eight. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff, Coconial County, Arizona. Declaring a public record that a certain document filed with the city clerk. And entitled Case Number P Z dash nineteen dash zero zero one two five. Updates to the zoning code twenty twenty dash high occupancy housing land use. And in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff, Coconial County, Arizona. Admining, admining the Flagstaff City Code Title Ten, Flagstaff Zoning Code. To implement the high occupancy housing plan. As adopted by the High Occupancy Housing Development, H O H D. And mixed-use high occupancy housing development, M H O H D, land uses and related standards. Staffs recommend actions that we adopt Resolution Number twenty twenty dash fifty-nine. And read by title for the final time. Mr. McCarthy?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I guess we don't have a presentation on this because we've gone over this quite a few times. I would like to move to adopt Resolution twenty twenty dash fifty-nine. With one minor change, and that would be to amend section two. To change the effective date. Which is listed as January first, twenty twenty-one, to change that to March first, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
So there's been a motion made by Mr. McCarthy. With a second by the Vice Mayor to read Resolution Number twenty twenty dash fifty-nine. With the amendment of changing number, changing section two to a start date of March first, two thousand twenty-one. Further comments, Mr. Odegaard?
When the time is right, I was gonna offer an amendment myself, and I'm not sure where to place that.
Okay, I think the amendment would probably.
I have to do this one first and then do another.
Mayor?
I think the amendment would be now. Mr. McCarthy?
I, I Sterling can chime in, but I think, so I made the basic motion. If Mr. Odegaard wants to change something, he should make an amendment. Because my so-called amendment was actually part of the original motion. And if anybody wants me to, I can kind of elaborate on why I suggested that change. But if Mr. Odegaard wants to make another. Go ahead, Sterling.
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor, Council, that is correct. The way Mr. McCarthy made the motion was. To just simply extend the effective date to March first as part of the motion to approve. If there's an amendment to the motion, Charlie could make that at any time. Councilmember Odegaard, excuse me.
And that would happen now.
Yep, and so I'd like to make a motion for an amendment. And I would like to be added to the definitions, and I do ask. The city clerk, I sent an email earlier, maybe to put that on the screen if possible. So my colleagues has a chance to read it. Before maybe someone does a second, or even if it gets a second, if possible. And so with the amendment, I would like to add is in the definition. Section ten dash eighty dot two zero dash zero eight zero dash H O H D. And colon, housing development either for rental or purchase in which all dwelling units are permanently affordable. And offered at sixty percent of the area median income or AMI. In compliance with the Department of Housing and Urban Development Regulations. Shall not be categorized as high occupancy housing development, regardless of the number of units, bedroom, or zoning. Also add in the section ten dash eight zero dot two zero dot one three oh, one three zero. Forward slash M O H D, colon. Mixed-use housing development either for rental or purchase. In which all dwelling units are permanently affordable and offered at sixty percent. Of the area median income or AMI, in compliance with the Department of Housing and Urban Development Regulations. Shall not be categorized as high occupancy housing development. Regardless of the number of units, bedrooms, or zoning. That's my motion of an amendment.
I'm wondering if our zoning code administrator has a comment to this?
Mayor, members of the council, if there's a second, I have a comment to explain, or I can explain it now if you like.
Mayor, that's what I was gonna say. This is Sterling. You need to call for a second first. If there's no second, then there's no need for an explanation.
I'll second that, Mayor.
So there has been a motion made by Mr. Odegaard for this amendment as written on the screen, with a second by the Vice Mayor. Can our zoning code administrator please explain it?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, members of council, Dan Seimer, zoning code manager for the city. This amendment will effectively eliminate the all affordable housing projects from the. Uh, HOH requirements. The HOH plan was based on developments that could be considered HOH regardless of affordability or not. That plan did have considerable public input. That projects of this size should go before a public hearing, whether they are a conditional use permit or not. The manner, the history behind this amendment is obviously not up for discussion, but. You would be effectively eliminating a significant amount of projects that could be affordable. And they would be allowed citywide.
Counsel? Mr. McCarthy?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I, I think the motives behind this amendment are excellent. But my concern is that. We've spent the last four years or so. Talking to the public, and they say they want to be involved in the discussion. So what this would do, this amendment would take the public out of the discussion. Uh, if, if this does not fail, if this fails, this amendment fails. Then anything that we would want to do could be done. Excepted it would have to go through a conditional use permit process. So the Planning and Zoning Commission could approve a project. And, but it would give the public an opportunity to review. What is gonna go on in their neighborhood. So I don't want to take the public out of the process, therefore I'm gonna have to vote no on this. Although I do think the motives behind it are really good. I don't think it's appropriate to say the public should not have a voice in such decisions.
I have a question for you, Mr. Odegaard, and I see that you have a comment.
Yes, Mayor.
Would this address the issue of NIMBYism when it comes to affordable housing? Is that your intentions behind this?
Uh, yes, Mayor, and also the intent of the community. I think that HOH was brought forward because of student housing in general. Not so much affordable housing, but student housing. And I think our community does say we want affordable housing for our community. And this is a way for us to deliver affordable housing for our community. Um, that addresses that, and you're right, Mayor, it does have some NIMBYism to it. But I think what the intent of HOH was, was concerning student housing, not so much affordable housing. So thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Odegaard, for bringing this forward. I think this is very interesting. I don't want to necessarily. Focus affordable housing complexes that trigger the HOH. To just the activity zones that are being discussed. You know, I think we all agree we need affordable housing everywhere and anywhere, and, and desperately in our community. And obviously with sensitivity to the neighborhood and with consideration of the neighborhood. I'm leaning towards supporting this council, and I, I think that this is a good idea. My question for staff, is there a way to kind of make this a win-win and find that balance between what Councilmember McCarthy is saying? And Minister Odegaard is saying in regards to that public input? I understand that, you know, if we don't, if we support this, it won't require a CUP, which won't put it through the process, but. Is there a way to help facilitate open houses and get public input that way? I know it'll be a little different, but is that possible?
I do believe, and I would rely on Tiffany on this one, that. I'm not positive, if it's a by right project, it would not require an open house meeting. Only public processes would. Now, our full intent of providing for affordable housing. Was to address the affordable housing as part of the greater affordable housing amendment, which we're looking to do next year. Although. It maybe I'd have to check, check with legal to add a specific requirement for this type of use. I do think it would be an issue to line item and use out from a uniformity standard. But it, it is, it's, it's kind of a, a challenge. I'm not positive. I rely on Tiffany and Christina.
We have a, a city attorney that would like to speak, followed by Ms. Antall.
Hi, this is Christina Rubalcava, Senior Assistant City Attorney. If the question is if whether or not we can make a requirement. That these projects, even though they're not HOH, go through a, a public meeting process. Um, I don't think we can, just because there wouldn't, there would not, would not be any point to that public meeting process. So if the community came out and said, we hate it for all these reasons, it would still be an entitled project and would still be administratively decided. So I think if council wants that public input, which this was, this amendment was not brought before P and Z. Or before council earlier, so the public hasn't had a chance to weigh in. And I think, my understanding of HOH, but Sarah Decter and her team can correct me if I'm wrong, is that it wasn't just student housing, it was all high-density housing. And I know the project that's being looked at now downtown, the Foundation for a Senior Living Project, is a pretty dense project. I think it's at least eighty units per acre. Um, that would be exempted through this proposed amendment, and there could be others, but that's just the one I'm aware of. So if there is an interest in seeing public input on that, I think that would need to be public input on the proposed amendment. Um, rather than trying to seek it later on a case-by-case basis.
Um, Ms. Antall?
Thank you, Mayor. This is Tiffany Antall. I just wanna, if, if the council is so interested to entertain alternatives. Um, to an amendment at this point, staff is prepared to offer other opportunities. Um, especially in regards to the project that's being discussed. Um, staff always loves that time and ability to review and assess proposed amendments. Especially something that's been vetted so long and hard through a public process. You know, I think as staff, what we would ask is maybe delay the effective date of this ordinance. And if it's so desired that this amendment move forward, give us a little extra time. To work up an amendment that meets the needs of everybody in terms of affordable housing.
Okay, thank you for that.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Is this the Vice Mayor that is talking?
Yes, it was.
Okay, do you want to finish your comment, and then I have a suggestion?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor. Just really briefly, I was just gonna say that, you know, maybe what we should do is leave it as is. Not touch, you know, I, you know, myself speaking for myself, I, I will not support the amendments. And then we can look at amendments and have staff vet the amendments properly and, and adopt those at a later date. Thank you, Mayor.
So I just wanted to weigh in. I actually think that this is a needed amendment to this particular document. I think that our community has stated, at least one segment of our community has been pretty clear that we need affordable housing. However, each time an affordable housing project comes before council for discussion. Um, there is not political will or political strength to actually move that project forward, at least in my mind. Unless it's in one specific neighborhood here in town. And looking back over the years, I, I, I understand the importance of having community input. But I do think that there is an element of NIMBYism that happens each time we talk about affordable housing project. And in general, the only time we don't have issues is when those affordable housing projects are built in the Sunny Side neighborhood area. So I appreciate Councilmember, um, um, Odegaard bringing this type of amendment forward. Because I think it helps further the goal of having affordable housing throughout our community for people to live in. Um, and I would say that in understanding staff has said they would like more time to perhaps look at this type of amendment. I would ask that council consider tabling this perhaps for a week. While staff could look at this proposed amendment and see if there's a better way to propose it to meet everyone's needs. Um, but if not, and we move forward with it, I will be in complete support of it. So who made the original motion? Was it Mr. McCarthy? I see Ms. Weeland.
What's on the table right now is Mr. Odegaard's amendment to my original motion.
I realize that, but there is another comment that I made right after that, suggesting that perhaps we table this for a week. If it's the will of the council to look at the amendment, to see if it could be better written. I see that Mr. Clifton has a comment, and then I want to go to Ms. Weeland.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. I, I do not have a con, a comment. I just am offering. I, I guess a question about process and, and parliamentary rules of procedure here for. Either for Sterling or Stacy or City Clerk. I believe we have two pending motions. Uh, the first one advanced by Mr. McCarthy, Councilmember McCarthy. Uh, and that one did have an amendment included with it. And then the second, and, and there was no action on that, to my knowledge, from the notes I've taken, a second motion by Councilmember Odegaard to amend. The first motion. And that one has not had action taken on it, so unless I'm, my notes are wrong, and they could be, I think we have two pending items here.
We have to clear Mr. Odegaard's item before we can actually take, take up the first item. I see, I see legal.
Ma- Mayor, Council, correct. The, uh, the most recent amendment is the one that has to be voted on first. Uh, then the original motion that contained an amendment. Then the original motion that contained an amendment can be voted on. I know the mayor has since proposed the possibility of tabling something, but no motion has been made on that with respect to tabling. It would have to be an official motion. And a motion to table is pushing something to the immediate meeting, next immediate meeting. Just wanted to clarify those points of the rules of procedure.
So I see that we have Ms. Whelan, then we have Mr. Aslan. Ms. Whelan?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I believe I need to agree with you, but I do have a question for Ms. Antal. Are, is, is your request saying that if we table this, there might be a better way of doing what we need to do in order to have those projects go through? And would a week be enough?
Thank you, Councilmember Whelan. Unfortunately, a week is not enough. So in a week's time, I'm not sure we could really resolve the issue. My suggestion would be that we, you know, that if this were adopted, that you consider extending the date that it becomes effective, which would allow the project that's currently in review to move forward as is. So it wouldn't get caught in this current amendment. However, we would also like to prioritize coming back and addressing, which it has always been our intention, because one of the next things we would like to tackle are the affordable housing incentives. But we'd like to take a more holistic approach. We realize it's very important, but we do need a little time to vet it. But again, we still want to make that a top priority. But we would need more than a week, of course.
Thank you. That's pretty clear. So I would wonder if, if Councilmember Odegaard would also add to this maybe a length of, of time. And that would give our staff time to see how this fits in the overall picture. But it would allow the current project to go through with, with the housing, high occupancy housing. So, thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Whelan. I'm afraid I don't want to delay. If this doesn't pass, this doesn't pass. But as the mayor so eloquently pointed out, that it's been a priority of this council to offer affordability. And here's our opportunity to set in place, and I don't want to back down from that. So, thank you.
Understood. I have a question for legal. Or maybe this would, I think this is a question for legal. Are, because the underlying motion that Mr. McCarthy has made extends the deadline to March 1st, 2021, does that not address what Ms. Antal has said about extending the deadline?
Mayor, Council, it does. That you wouldn't have to have that built into the original, or sorry, the Second Amendment that Councilmember Odegaard has put forward. It's already part of the original motion that Councilmember McCarthy put forward.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go to Mr. Aslan, then we're going to go ahead and we're going to vote on Mr. Odegaard's motion. Mr. Aslan?
Well, let's vote. I would support it, just moving forward, this amendment.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead and vote on Mr. Odegaard's amendment. It is as written in front of us. All those in favor?
Aye.
Loud ayes.
Aye.
Any opposed?
McCarthy.
Okay, that amendment carries. We'll now go back to Mr. McCarthy's original motion. And that original motion was to approve, to adopt Resolution Number 2020-59 with the amendment of extending the effective date to March 1st, 2021. Is there any further discussion on the original amendment, I mean, original motion? All those in favor? Like, Mr. McCarthy?
Well, actually, changing the date is sort of moot now, because there's no need for it. Never mind. I'll just, just call the motion.
So is your emotion the way you originally did it?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll, we'll leave it the way it originally was, although the need for it is not as strong now as it was before. But there's no sense in changing the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
Okay, that motion carries. Thank you.
Mayor, Council, this is Sterling. I just need to clarify, it's a city attorney, the motion, or sorry, the, because the motion passed with the amended date, that date needs to change in the actual ordinance.
Correct. And so we're going to then have a motion to read Ordinance Number 2020-28 by title only for the final time with the amended date. Mr. Clifton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, and everybody who's been involved in this discussion. A question for Council, perhaps before you act on the ordinance or after. You had a pretty thoughtful suggestion advanced by Tiffany Antal to allow staff time to vet the amendment that has now been approved. Because the way this motion was framed, it becomes effective March 1st. The question for the Council is, would you like to see staff still continue to go forward and look at the amended language? And perhaps come up with either clarifying or alternative language for Council to consider? Or is this a finality to this particular item and we move forward?
Council?
Mayor, I would, I'm sorry.
No, you're, you're fine.
I'm going to go with Ms. Whelan, then I'll go with Mr. Aslan. I encourage us to use the chat to indicate. Thank you, Ms. Whelan.
Mayor, I, I would, I would support that staff continue be, to look at this, and there might be a more simplistic way of doing this and bring it back to Council at that point, since it, it doesn't go into effect until March. So I'm, I agree with the city manager.
Okay, Mr. Aslan?
Well, my comment was going to be that it's not clear to me that this needs clarifying. But I would say that if, if staff is looking at this in the time before the ordinance goes into effect, and they find a way to clarify or to further the intent of what we've just done, then obviously I would be wide open to considering language changes that further the intent.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I, I agree with what's been said.
Okay, I'm going to go to our city attorney next, and then back to Ms. Decter.
Mayor, Council, just, yes, sorry, Mayor, Council. Just to clarify, there's, there's quite a process when you vet this through staff. It, it takes a significant amount of time. And I don't believe with the, even with the extension through March 1st, and I would lean on Ms. Antal or anyone else from Community Development to, to speak to this with respect to the, the timing. Would you have enough time to get through the process to properly vet that before March 1st?
We'll go to Ms. Antal, then back to Ms. Decter.
Thank you, Sterling. This is Tiffany Antal. I, I think what I'm hearing, though, is that there isn't a need to vet this further, because this is the preferred language. And if that's what Council wishes to see move forward, then that's what, then we should just move on into, and we will continue to work on the affordable housing incentives.
Ms. Decter? Okay, I see that you've indicated. If you could verbalize that, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor Evans. So I can, my question's not relevant after Sterling and Tiffany's comment.
Okay, thank you. So I go back to, you know, we are here to read Ordinance Number 2020-28 by title only for the final time with an amended date. Is there a motion for that?
Mayor, I believe we already have a motion.
Who made the motion?
Uh, McCarthy.
McCarthy, and who seconded it?
I did.
Okay, so is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I believe that carries. Thank you.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff amending the Flagstaff City Code Title 10, Flagstaff Zoning Code, by adopting by reference that certain document entitled Case Number PZ-19-00125, Updates to Zoning Code 2020, High Occupancy Housing Land Use, Providing for Penalties, Repeal of Conflicting Ordinances, Severability, and Establishing an Effective Date as amended.
Is there a motion to adopt? Okay, so Ms. Whelan has indicated she's a no. Is there a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 2020-28 with the amended date?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
This is Charlie, a second.
There's been a motion made by the Vice Mayor and a second by Mr. Odegaard to adopt Ordinance Number 2020-28 with an amended date. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we're now down to 7B. This is Consideration Adoption of Ordinance Number 2020-29, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff abandoning and authorizing the sale of approximately 1,200 square feet of public right-of-way adjacent to 4013 South Holland Road, providing for delegation of authority, repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, and establishing an effective date. Staffs recommend actions that we read this ordinance by title only for the final time and then adopt.
Hi, good evening, Mayor. This is Community Development Director Dan Folk. The only update I have for you is we did put a new exhibit to this ordinance. You may recall last time we had a concept sketch. We now actually have a legal description, and that was in your packet. And we made an update in the ordinance itself. We were talking about approximately 1,200 square feet. We now know it's 1,168 square feet. And that's right from that legal description. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have on this item.
Council, are there any questions for Mr. Folk? If not, is there a motion?
This is McCarthy. I move to read Ordinance 2020-29 by title only for the final time.
Is there a second?
This is Charlie, second.
There's been a motion made by Mr. McCarthy and a second by Mr. Odegaard to read Ordinance Number 2020-29 by title only for the final time. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff abandoning and authorizing the sale of approximately 1,200 square feet of, I apologize, I have the wrong title. Just a moment, Mayor, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, again, my apologies. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff abandoning and authorizing the sale of 1,168 square feet of public right-of-way adjacent to 4013 South Holland Road, providing for delegation of authority, repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, and establishing an effective date.
Is there a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 2020-29?
Still moved. McCarthy?
A second?
This is Charlie, second.
There's been a motion made by Ms. McCarthy and a second by Mr. Odegaard to adopt Ordinance Number 2020-29. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. We're now down to item number C. This is Consideration Adoption of Ordinance Number 2020-30, an ordinance of the Flagstaff City Council ratifying the grant and reservation of easements and formally accepted, formally accepted dedications and donations of easements and real property interest, delegating authority, establishing an effective date. Staffs recommend actions that we read Ordinance Number 2020-30 by title only for the final time and then adopt.
Good afternoon. This is Bryce Doty, the Real Estate Manager. I do not have any updates to this item.
Council, is there a motion?
Mayor, this is Jim McCarthy. I read, I move that we read Ordinance 2020-30 by title only for the final time.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's been a motion made by Mr. McCarthy, a second by Mr. Aslan, to read Ordinance Number 2020-30 by title only for the final time. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Is there a motion?
Oh, sorry. I just need to read, Mayor, I'm sorry. An ordinance of, an ordinance of the Flagstaff City Council ratifying the grant and reservation of easements and formally accepting dedications and donations of easements and real property interests, delegating authority, and establishing an effective date.
Is there a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 2020-30?
Still moved.
Charlie moved to the left.
I'm going to take Mr. McCarthy as the motion, and Mr. Odegaard as the second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. We're now down to D. This is Consideration Approval of Amendment 1 to the Construction Manager at Risk Construction Services Agreement for the northern portion of the Coconio State's Improvement Phase 1 project. Staffs recommend action is we approve Amendment 1 to the Contractor Manager at Risk with Eagle Mountain Construction in the amount of $3,192,513.34, with no changes to the construction duration, and approve a owner's contingency of $74,842.99, which is approximately 2.3% of the guaranteed maximum price for the northern portion of the project, and to authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents. Staff?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. I'm Eli Reisner, City of Flagstaff Capital Improvements Project Manager. I'm here to recommend the approval of Amendment 1 to add the northern portion of the Coconio State's Improvements Phase 1 project to the current C-Mark Construction Services Agreement with Eagle Mountain Construction. Given the large scale and time it would take to design and construct the project, it was decided early in development to split the project into a southern and northern portion. This allowed for construction of the southern portion to begin in 2020 while the design was being completed on the northern portion, instead of waiting for the entire design of the project to be completed and missing the 2020 construction season. As seen on the map, the southern portion includes Beale and the streets south of Beale. And the northern portion includes the streets north of Beale. In the spring of this year, council awarded the original agreement for the southern portion with the understanding that the northern portion would be presented for council's consideration this fall as amendment to the original agreement. We have since completed design of the northern portion and are now bringing Amendment 1 before council for your consideration, which will add the improvements and costs of the northern portion to the original agreement. Improvements on the northern portion streets generally consist of replacing existing infrastructure with new. Improvements on the northern portion streets generally consist of replacing existing infrastructure with new, including water and sewer mains, water and sewer services, fire hydrants, storm drains, streetlights, curb and gutter, the entire asphalt roadway, and new underground electric lines for street lighting. The one exception to these general improvements is Whipple Road, which will only receive a new water main and water services. There will be no sidewalk added to these streets in the northern portion. Pending council's approval, the two portions will roll into one continuous construction project. As the southern portion nears completion in 2021, the construction of the northern portion will begin, with the entire project completed by fall 2022. The original contract duration of 900 calendar days included the time it would take to construct the northern portion of the project. Therefore, this amendment will not extend the contract duration, nor will this amendment extend the duration of the temporary construction yard in the northwest corner of the Thorpe Park Annex. Use of this site as a temporary construction yard for this project will terminate when the project is completed. The temporary construction yard in the Thorpe Park Annex is located south of the Coconio State's Improvements Phase 1 project. We will not be seeking to use the Thorpe Park Annex as a temporary construction yard for the Coconio State's Improvements Phase 2 project when it begins construction. Coconio State's Improvements Phase 1 and Coconio State's Improvement Phase 2 are completely separate projects with completely separate scopes and locations as seen here on the map. There is more information about both projects at the website www.cocoinostates.com and directions on how to sign up for weekly updates if you wish to receive them during construction. That concludes this presentation. Does the council have any questions for me or our contractor Eagle Mountain Construction?
Ms. Odegaard?
Um, only thing I want to say is thank you concerning the timeline for the temporary yard use at old Maggion Yard site. So thank you for that.
Are there any other comments, Counsel? Is there a motion?
Mayor, I guess I move to approve, uh, 7D.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion made by Mr. Odegaard and a second by the Vice Mayor to approve item D, which is the consideration and approval of Amendment 1 to the Construction Manager at Risk Construction Services Agreement for the northern portion of Coconio State's Improvement Phase 1 project. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. We're now down to 7E. This is a consideration approval of a contract. This is a federal lobbying services contract. Staffs recommend actions that we approve the contract with Nexus Consulting LLC to provide federal lobbying services for the City of Flagstaff for the annual fee of $96,000 for the first year, with a provision for a 2.5% increase each succeeding year, succeeding year, plus applicable expenses billed at cost, and to authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents. Is there any comments? I believe this will go to the city manager.
Mayor, this is Jessica Drum, Public Affairs Director. We have a short presentation and Sarah Langley and Patrick will be bringing that up momentarily.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Counsel. My apologies, I couldn't get my mute button off quick enough. But this is Patrick Brown, City of Flagstaff Purchasing Director, and I'm gonna just give you a quick overview of the procurement of this contract. And then I'm gonna turn it over to Sarah Langley to talk a little bit more about the details for awarding the contract to Nexus. And I believe we also have Mr. Bob Holmes with Nexus on the line to help answer questions as we go along. Uh, we procure these services through a request for proposals, also known as an RFP, solicitation process. Purchasing worked with Sarah entertaining the city manager's office to craft a scope of work that was relevant to the interest and the needs of the city. When we finished that scope of work, we developed scoring criteria in the RFP that supported that scope of work. The RFP was then posted and advertised for approximately 31 days and purchasing hosted a virtual pre-proposal meeting on July 1st for interested firms to seek additional questions and clarifications. The proposals for this contract were due on July 17th and we received three proposals. A selection committee consisting of seven members representing multiple divisions at the city that have interest evaluated and scored each of the proposals. From those scores, Nexus was determined to be the highest scoring firm by the selection committee, leading to our recommendation for award tonight. And with that, I'll ask if there's any questions before I turn it over to Sarah.
Counsel, are there any questions? Does not look like we have any.
All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Patrick. And good evening, Mayor and Counsel. This is Sarah Langley, Management Analyst. Um, I would like to briefly provide the council with some information on why the selection committee ranked Nexus Consulting as the highest scoring firm. So first, Nexus Consulting has a very strong presence in northern Arizona. They have decades of experience and longstanding relationships with members of our congressional delegation. So the selection committee felt that, you know, this really enables Nexus to communicate the City of Flagstaff's needs to the necessary people. Uh, the staff at Nexus are also aware of the issues and needs specific to the City of Flagstaff, including being an important member of the Rio de Flag, sorry, Rio de Flag project team, um, and advocating for the city's interests as they relate to forest health, airport infrastructure, and transportation. Additionally, the selection committee saw a lot of value in the work that Nexus, uh, in the work of Nexus Consulting in advocating for federal funding for city projects. And they do have a track record of securing tens of millions of dollars in federal funding for the city. And then lastly, Nexus has presented their proposal in a very strategic and results-based approach. Um, so their presented approach includes a communication plan, short, medium, and long-term goals, and specific relationships with members of Congress who sit on certain committees. Um, and those relationships can then be leveraged to advocate for the City of Flagstaff and for our needs. So these are the key reasons that Nexus Consulting was chosen by the selection committee. Uh, and so with that, I'd like to note, as Patrick said, that Bob Holmes of Nexus Consulting is on the line to answer any questions, as well as myself and Patrick. Thank you.
Counsel, are there any questions for Ms. Langley or Mr. Holmes? Ms. Odegaard?
You know, I just wanted to make a comment as an outgoing council member. Um, uh, the applicant that we're looking at the contract with, in my experience on four years in the council, has been nothing but of excellence. Um, and so this just makes perfect sense to continue on the great work that's been done in years past. And I appreciate it and I really wanted to thank the contractor for all of their work in the past four years I've been on the council. So thank you.
Um, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, and I just wanted to thank Mr. Holmes and his partner in crime, Anna, Anna, for their work for the city. And I wanted just to let Mr. Holmes maybe speak if he is on the line to some of the successes that we have achieved in the past year or two. Um, I know there's been a couple of members of the public who have asked about what we've done in our partnership and collaboration and, and I'd love to have you kind of talk to that. And good to see you. Thanks for being with us.
Thank you for your kind words, uh, Councilmember Odegaard, and thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, I really appreciate the question and, and let me just say, first of all, it's, it's, it's an honor to partner with the City of Flagstaff, um, who has a wonderful staff and wonderful council. And I think together we've achieved a lot. Um, ju- I just want to touch base on the, on the last year, we've, we've brought over $100 million back to the City of Flagstaff. As you know, we've been working on the Rio Flag flood control project um, since 2001, when we were initially hired. Um, that, as you know, is a hundred and, and a hundred plus million dollar flood control project. We got the last $15 million this past February. So we got those monies, uh, and we are actively looking to award that contract wholly and complete the project within the next five to seven years. Um, also, um, you know, with the pandemic, it really hit municipalities really hard. We work closely with our congressional delegation, um, and with the governor's office to disseminate some of those CARES Act funds. Um, the city was able to receive about $8 million in those funds. And potentially more if we get another COVID package. Uh, airport, which also suffered greatly, travel has been greatly impacted by COVID. Uh, we were able to, uh, get $18 million to Polian Airport, which was a huge win. Uh, rural airports, there were many articles written about how rural airports, uh, got in a larger portion of some of the CARES Act funding, and that's certainly true. We worked with Senator Roy Blunt from Missouri, who is the Transportation, um, Appropriations Chairman in the Senate, and he has, he represents some small airports and was able to partner with us to, to push funds to some of those rural airports. So that was a really big win. We were able to get, uh, funding for, uh, about $17.25 million to the Downtown Connections Center, uh, which is going to be a huge project, a huge win for, for Mountain Line and for the city. Uh, that was the largest grant that they gave. That was this December 2019. That was the largest grant that FTA, Federal Transit Administration, gave out. Um, and, and there's, and there are many other things. And we have $13 million also for administration and buildings and buses for, for Mountain Line. So, uh, you know, we work, continue to work on forest health and water and infrastructure. So thank you for the question. It's very partnering and, and we look for continued success working with the city and the staff. So thank you, Vice Mayor.
I'm gonna go to Ms. Whelan.
Hi, Bob. I just wanted to take a moment, um, as I'm leaving council. You know, when I first got on council, I was so skeptical about just what were you doing in Washington? And after a visit and, and working with you and Anna, I, I just can't tell you how valuable you are for this city. And I wish everyone knew what you did or what you do and what you constantly do when you're looking out for northern Arizona and Flagstaff. So thank you so much. And I guess when the Rio is done, you can then retire. Is that correct?
I will retire. I'll keep working hard for the city. And again, say thank you, council member, for your kind words. I, I know we wore out some good shoe leather when you were in town. But it's invaluable. And I always tell you and the other council members and the mayor this, it's so valuable to have a committed council and staff that's willing to come to DC and make the pitches to the members of Congress because, um, they're not accountable to me, they're accountable to you. And when they see that you're in the city and in Washington making these commitments, they know how important it is. And I think that's, that's contributed to our success. So the dedication of, of public servants like you and the others has been a tremendous help to us. So, so thanks again.
Well, thank you. Mr. McCarthy?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. After working with Nexus for four years and with Mr. Holmes, I take great pleasure in moving that we approve the contract with Nexus Consulting as outlined in the agenda and authorize the city manager to execute the necessary, uh, documents. Good to see you, Bob.
Ms. Salas?
Okay, so there's been a motion made by Mr. McCarthy and a second by Ms. Salas to approve the contract with Nexus Consulting. I did want to chime in and say, um, thank you to Bob and Anna um, for the work that you have done on behalf of the city for, for decades, really. I have had the opportunity to work with you since 2008, um, regarding not only the Rio de Flag project, but CDBG, um, Forest Health Railroad, um, everything that you outlined as the Vice Mayor requested that you mention. And your dedication to, um, delivering, uh, delivering quality, um, projects for the city as well as the necessary funding for the city, um, has been bar none. I have learned a great deal in my tenure, tenure from you, especially when it comes to cultivating relationships at a federal level and the importance of cultivating relationships at the federal level to ensure that we bring home as much money as we possibly can to address the issues that we have, not only as a city, but as a region um, in partnership. Um, I, I think back to the time where we had the opportunity to also work with the Havasu Pae and help them with the issues that they had, as well as Navajo Nation. You mentioned, um, you know, the county and NATA. So I just want to say thank you, um, for your years of dedication, um, and partnership, uh, to, um, our city and our community. And I am excited, um, to have us pass this vote to make sure that, um, such work continues ongoing. Our work here is not done. We are finalizing things with the Rio de Flag, but we know that we have a huge lift when it comes to water and when it comes to forest health in our communities. Also, with the census, um, being kind of conducted, not quite, there is going to be the need to go back and champion and advocate for CDBG dollars and for housing dollars. So I just want to say thank you once again, and I'm excited to get a chance to say this to you, um, before I leave, um, office in December.
Mayor, thank you so much. It's just an incredible honor to work with you. Uh, I'm gonna miss you in DC. I think you did more trips than anybody else. Um, but it, again, it, it shows your dedication to the city and to your community. And, uh, we've had great success. I'm getting both kill bumps because I, I'm gonna miss you. So, so thank you.
So there has been a motion and a second. Um, I'm gonna ask the city manager to just verbalize, um, what he has stated, and then we will take the vote.
Thank you, uh, Madam Mayor. I will verbalize. I had previously requested to make a comment and no sooner than I did than our Vice Mayor, pretty much stated the same thing, which was a desire to have uh, some sort of, of narrative or, or summary of the funds that the city has received of late, just so we can, uh, in, inform, or not just remind ourselves, but inform our citizenry of the value of this particular service. Uh, in the, in the minds of some, a, a question could come up, well, why, why lobbying services in Washington? And, uh, uh, in, in addition to the, the many, many substantive policy advocacy efforts that have been taken, we also see, uh, such a, a large amount of grant dollar appropriations and grant dollars, uh, care packages coming back to the city. And so we are direct beneficiary of those efforts. Thank you very much.
There's been a motion and a second. A motion made by Ms. McCarthy and a second by Ms. Salas to approve this contract. Uh, Mr. Aslan?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Hi, Bob. I just wanted to chime in real fast and say it's been a pleasure working with you. I've learned a lot from you and I'm looking forward to another couple of years of pounding the pavement and wearing out a pair of sneakers that look like, uh, dress shoes. Um, I'm really looking forward to us, uh, hitting those halls of power again.
Yeah, I can't wait to have you back here, council member. Um, you know, there's a, there's a freeze right now that you can't get in the Capitol. But I'm hopefully with the good news on these vaccines, I'm hoping we can get back there soon. So maybe next year we'll do Zoom, uh, Zoom, uh, uh, League of Cities Conference, but I'm hopeful that you guys need to get back here soon, uh, to, to advocate. So thanks again. And it's been a pleasure to work with you as well.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? That motion does carry. Thank you. So we're gonna go ahead and stop here at 4:30 and we will resume, um, on our regular agenda, item, um, 8, uh, at 4:45. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, council, we are back from our break. We are on item number eight A. This is our regular agenda, consideration adoption of ordinance number 2020-31. In ordinance amending the Flagstaff City Code, Chapter 1-18, Administrative Departments to Establishing the Engineering and Capital Improvements Division in City Code. Staffs recommend action at this meeting is that we read ordinance number 2020-31 by title only for the final time, for the first time. My apologies. Staff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. I think Jeanne Gallagher and Shannon Anderson both have their names appended to this. Jeanne, would you like to kick this off or would you care for me to? Okay, Madam Mayor, Council, before you is an ordinance to establish an engineering and capital improvements division. This is a, a bit of a formality. Council has been apprised of this and has been vetted quite a bit at the staff level. You have in your packet a memo authored by Shannon Anderson and Jeanne Gallagher, and I don't want to belabor what is before you in print. It's a nice summary of the reason for this ordinance. I think I will just keep it at a high level and note that this is a move that we think makes sense at a, at a few levels, not the least of which is the, the involvement of the engineering and capital improvements component of the organization across the spectrum of the organization. Their projects touch on so many different other divisions. And with, with that level of prominence in mind and their integration into the ordinance, really this is a restructuring that is putting into place something that is already in practice in place, if that makes sense. In practicality, the engineering and capital improvements team has, has been such an integral part of your organization that really this restructure is following what is already in practice. I think we do have Shannon Anderson back with us. I, I think she had an audio issue, which is a polite way of saying that she couldn't get her mute button undone. But Shannon, if you are with us and if you'd like to offer any elaboration, I don't want to take it away from you, please.
Greg, I don't know if I have anything new to add. This ordinance basically updates the code to include a new division that will report up to one of the department heads. Certainly, if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer any.
Shannon, if I may, before questions too, I did not speak to the other component of this, which does not require council action, but we certainly wanted to apprise council of it, and that is the restructuring with respect to open space. If you'd like to touch on that, that would be great.
Sure. One of the things that we've been meeting between sustainability as well as parks and recreation is where we believe open space would best align. Open space moved into sustainability when we were working on acquiring property and working a lot with the State Parks Department. Now that we've acquired a lot of this property, it needs to be maintained, and this is something that Parks and Rec is very good at. And so being able to bring this program back into Parks and Recreation will allow us to align those resources and hopefully help with the maintenance of the lands that have been acquired for open space.
Thank you, Shannon. And Madam Mayor and Council, I will just wrap up by noting, in addition to what Shannon has stated, and in addition to the memoranda, memorandum that you have in your packet, the, the restructure on the city engineering and capital improvements section, which is now becoming a division, will bring them to the leadership table. Of course, we will have the presence of Rick Barrett. We, we started that in practice this week. Rick, of course, has been with the city for, I, I believe, 36 years. So there, there's something also very deserving and appropriate about this restructure. We look forward to having Rick's contributions at the leadership table. I also would be remiss if I did not acknowledge the, the great work and professionalism by our Community Development Division and Dan Falk in particular, who has worked with us very graciously on this restructure, noting that everything we're doing here is about the betterment of the organization. And so with that, I'd be glad to field any questions or comments that you may have, and I'm sure Shannon could do the same.
Counsel, are there any questions for our city manager? Ms. Whelan?
I'm wondering if you could speak to the financial impact.
Yes, I can, and thank you for the question. As noted, there will be some budgetary impact, and it will basically involve a reclassification. We've done a couple of these already. This will mimic the process we followed with IT earlier this year when a section became a division. That was the last time this has happened. This represents the second time in which this is happening over the, the course of the past year. That budgetary impact, I don't want to downplay it, but it wasn't terribly significant. But I don't have numbers for you yet, Councilmember Whelan, but the, that will be the impact is that reclassification. It will occur likely after the, or at the first of the new calendar year, and we have yet to get this in front of the budget team. So that process has yet to occur, but that is the impact that we are seeing. And when we can attribute numbers to what I just said, we will report back to you probably in every, well, it'll be the newly seated council in a retreat setting. But that is the impact. I just can't quantify it in exact dollars just yet. I will note, I mentioned just a moment ago that Mr. Barrett has, his tenure with the city is, is at 36 years. It suffices to note that he, that position is, is at the upper end of the, the range. So seeing him transfer into a division directorship role will not be significant.
Well, he certainly deserves it. Yeah, I, I, I think it's a wonderful idea. I know it's well thought out from you, Mr. City Manager, and from leadership. So, thank you.
And thank you, Councilmember Whelan. Much appreciated.
Counsel, are there any more comments? If not, is there a motion?
Mayor, I move that we read ordinance number 2020-31 by title only for the first time.
Is there a second?
Second, McCarthy.
There's been a motion made by the Vice Mayor and a second by Mr. McCarthy to read ordinance number 2020-31 by title only for the first time. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion does carry. Thank you.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff, Arizona, amending the Flagstaff City Code, Chapter 1-18, Administrative Departments to Establish the Engineering and Capital Improvements Division, providing repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, authority for clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date.
Thank you, City Clerk. Just as a reminder to everyone at the meeting and everyone who's listening, it would be the Flagstaff City Council's intention at the December 1st, 2020 council meeting to read ordinance number 2020-31 by title only for the final time, and then to adopt ordinance number 2020-31 at that same meeting. We're now down to 8B. This is consideration and adoption of ordinance number 2020-32. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff, changing the name of Agassi Street to, that will be further discussion by council, providing for severability, authority for clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date. Today at this meeting, we are being asked to read ordinance number 2020-32 by title only for the first time. Discussion? Staff?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening. This is Sarah Langley, Management Analyst. We've prepared a brief presentation for you, which Jessica Drum will be displaying shortly.
My apologies, the presentation is showing that it is still loading. I am...
I might suggest while you are loading that, Jessica, Sarah, if you can give us a little more narrative on the front end of this.
Definitely, Greg. So tonight, oh, there it is. I can see it, and I hope the, the mayor and council can as well. Tonight, I will be providing a brief overview of previous council direction and staff action related to the renaming of Agassi Street, and then we'll be seeking council direction on how to move forward with the process. Next slide. So, due to the racist ideologies both promoted and practiced by Louis Agassi, council directed staff on June 16th of 2020 to begin the process of renaming Agassi Street, noting that staff should incorporate public participation and involvement into that process. So in the months of August and September, staff held a series of virtual town hall meetings and also sent postcards to property owners on Agassi Street in order to increase awareness of council's direction to rename the street and also to gather a list of suggested names from the community. And then from mid-October to early November, staff published a survey on community forum to allow members of the public to vote on their preferred name choice. So that's just a brief overview of what has taken place so far. Next slide, please. So in addition to giving direction, giving staff direction to rename Agassi Street at the June 16th council meeting, some council members had also requested that we come back with additional information on the potential costs involved in the renaming process. So the main cost is, of course, new street signs and the associated work to install those street signs. Our street section has estimated that this would cost approximately $9,800 for 26 new street signs, and they have confirmed that it would be possible to fund this through the existing streets budget. So that would be the only required cost. There were also some questions about the potential to compensate affected property owners. Property owners in Flagstaff do not have a right to compensation due to a street name change, so this is optional and not a required cost. If council were interested in this option, it could either be structured as a reimbursement for specific costs incurred by the property owner, or it could be structured as a lump, lump sum payment. So as an example, the City of Phoenix is currently renaming two derogatory street names, and they are offering reimbursement to affected property owners for costs incurred. And they estimate that this would cost approximately $150 per property. But of course, this would depend on, you know, the composition of property types along the street, if there's more commercial versus residential properties. So that dollar amount is, is just an estimate. And then lastly, this is an unbudgeted expense. So if there were council interest in pursuing this, it could potentially be paid from the council initiatives budget. Next slide, please. So moving on to the public involvement process, during those virtual town hall meetings that I mentioned, and also through email, staff gathered a list of 56 initial name suggestions from community members. And in order to ensure that those name suggestions could be implemented safely, we then ran the names through a vetting process, which included our own city GIS section, Coconino County Emergency Services, and the post office. And after that vetting process, we had 18 name suggestions remaining. The most common reasons for excluding a name suggestion were that the name was too similar to an existing street within either the city or the county, or that the name suggestion was too long and over the, the number of characters that is allowed for a street sign. Next slide, please. So that final list of 18 name suggestions was used for a survey, and staff ran that survey on community forum for two weeks. And within that survey, the public could select the, the name that they thought would be the best replacement. So in total, we had 1,003 responses to the survey, and you can see the number of votes that each name suggestion received on the slide. And the rationale for each name suggestion is also included in your agenda packet as an attachment. Next slide, please. So diving into the survey results a bit deeper, we wanted to provide you with the rationales behind the top five scoring name suggestions. So in first place, with 152 votes was Pluto Place, and this was suggested, of course, due to Pluto being discovered in Flagstaff. In second place, with 122 votes, was Corn Pollen Way. And the community member who suggested this name noted that corn pollen is a sacred element used in some indigenous healing ceremonies and that it's related to respect and the care for others. In third place was Annie Watkins Lane with 120 votes. Ms. Watkins was a champion of voter registration and participation and was also the first African-American teacher hired by FUSD after desegregation. Tied for fourth place is Annie Woneka Way with 111 votes. Ms. Woneka was a strong advocate for healthcare and education on the Navajo Nation and dedicated her life to those causes. And then also with 111 votes is Avery Way, and Dr. Avery was a neurosurgeon in Flagstaff that passed away from an accident at Lake Powell. So again, these are the top five scoring name suggestions and just a quick summary of the rationale behind those names, but the full rationales for all of the name suggestions can be found in the agenda packet. Next slide, please. So you should now, again, be able to see the, the list of complete survey results. And at this point, we are looking for council direction on which name should be used to rename Agassi Street. And as our city clerk noted, we have also prepared an ordinance. So if council chooses, that can be read tonight for the first time with the chosen name. Thank you.
Okay, I see that Mr. McCarthy has a comment. I believe we have public comment. Mr. McCarthy, did you want to go first or did you want to take the public comment?
Let's go public first. Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. We have one public comment. Deb Harris.
Ms. Harris, you can go ahead and speak now.
Good evening, Mayor Evans, Vice Mayor Simoni, and council members. I'm here today to speak on behalf of the Southside Community Association, and we are in support of renaming Agassi Street to Wilson Rouse Avenue or Way. Wilson Rouse was the principal of Dunbar Senior Data School. The Murdoch Center stands on that site at the, at the street, and the street runs along the west side of the building. Rouse went on to serve the first, to serve as the first black elected state officer in California. He served 12 years as the state superintendent of education. Here along with Sturgeon Cromer, desegregated Flagstaff schools before the infamous Brown versus Board of Education. Mr. Rouse lived and worked in the Southside community and was a unifying force in Flagstaff. He feels that this would start Flagstaff down the road to recognizing the many contributions that African-Americans have contributed to the growth and the building of Flagstaff. Just so that you know, a group of students 50 years ago, led by a man who is now an attorney, Booker Evans, brought this matter to the city's attention. And then several years later, several years ago, roughly about five years ago, another group of black students were successful in getting the university to change the Agassi Conference Room to the Third Good Marshall Room, however, which is now not in existence anymore because when they remodeled the centers, they got rid of that room. Flagstaff currently has no public spaces that recognize the contributions or the existence of African-Americans in this community. And we think that given the many contributions of that group of people who basically remain invisible, we're asking the council to consider naming, renaming the street Wilson Rouse Avenue or Way. And thank you very much. Do I stand in line for questions or is that it?
Yes, you can stand in line for questions.
Um, are there any questions for Ms. Harris?
This is Jim McCarthy.
Mr. McCarthy?
Ms. Harris, you were...
Ms. Harris, you were kind of garbled, so I didn't really catch the name. Is it Wilson, W-I-L-S-O-N? And then what's the last name?
Wilson Riles, R-I-L-E-S.
Thank you.
There's a question by the vice mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Harris, for being with us and your advocacy. My question for you is, you know, looking at the public engagement on the names and the polling that we did, Annie Watkins Lane is towards the top. What are your thoughts on that as a name for the street?
I'm sorry, are you asking me about Annie Watkins?
Yes, I am. Who was the first African-American teacher hired by FUSD. I'm not going to read her whole description, but yeah, Annie Watkins.
Yes, I'm aware of Annie Watkins. She was a resident of Flagstaff. In fact, she is related to Wilson Riles. And I really don't have a whole lot to say about Annie Watkins. While I think that she is definitely a contributor to Flagstaff and to our community, or was a contributor to the community, I think that Wilson Riles has a bigger effect or more of a far-reaching effect, given that he not only was part of the desegregation of Flagstaff Unified School District 70, 80 years ago, however long that was. He also went on to California, and he served as the superintendent of schools there, and also served as advisor to several presidents regarding education. And a lot of his innovations or his tactics in educating students are still being used in our school across the country today.
Are there any other comments for Ms. Harris? Questions? Thank you, Ms. Harris. I'll go back to, I'll go back to Mr. McCarthy.
Well, thank you, Mayor. A couple of thoughts. One is, I was very pleased to see that staff had sent out postcards to all of the property owners on the affected street. If we had tried to do this without informing them, then I would be very hesitant to do it. We have seen some emails pro and some emails con about making this change. I do think it would be appropriate that we give some kind of compensation to the homeowners because, you know, they're going to end property owners because they're going to have to change letterheads and business cards and do a lot of fiddling around to affect the name change. So, and I don't know what that should be. I'm thinking something simple, maybe a certain amount. Maybe like Phoenix is doing, they think it runs about $150. So if it were $150 times 116 properties, that would be 17,400, which I think would be reasonable. Maybe we would go 200 or maybe 300. But, you know, before we do a formal motion, maybe I can hear what the other council members think about that. As far as what name to choose, I was leaning towards Annie Watkins Lane, but I am open-minded about maybe Wilson Riles. And then, of course, you have like subtle questions like, should it be WC Riles? Or should it be Wilson Riles, or just Riles? So why don't I leave it at that for now and see what the other council members say, and we can come around again. Thank you.
Mr. Aslan?
Hi, yeah, I apologize if I missed this in the presentation, but was there a ranked choice element to this? Was there any way for a lot of those votes that fell off at the bottom to be redistributed amongst the more popular choices?
Good evening, Councilmember Aslan. No, unfortunately, Community Forum is a little bit limited in the survey options that it allows, so the way the survey was set up was that each respondent chose one name, and then that name was distributed, was attributed one point.
Okay. Well, I think it would have been nice to see how some of these other votes would have been redistributed. If we'd had the opportunity to do that, I'm sure it would have been informative. I feel that it's kind of presumptive for me to weigh in on what we should name this street. There's a lot of choices here that have very much equal weight, and I would throw Code Talker Way into the mix as one of the options that made the cut, so to speak, if you just looked at the way the distribution came out here. Code Talker Way was something I was very excited about. It's simple, it's informative, it's reflective of our community, and I'm a little bit surprised that Pluto Place came out on top. I think one of these other one of these other options that celebrates a person or some sort of other elements of our town's heritage is more appropriate. I'm really, I mean, I don't know, I'm not willing to vote on a choice yet, but but that's just some of the thinking behind what where my thinking is at. And in terms of the cost, I, I'm not going to be, I'm not going to have a strong opinion one way or the other on this. I think it's important that we compensate businesses for the cost involved in this, and I think that, I think that's more important than compensating residents. You know, people move all the time, and we have to deal with change of addresses and new street names everywhere. I think that's just one of the punches we're able to roll with, and the city has more important things to spend money on. But again, these are just some transparency and thinking for me, and I'm looking forward to the conversation.
Okay. Mr. Odegaard?
I was just going to follow up with Councilmember McCarthy and saying, out of an equity issue, there should be some type of compensation made concerning a street naming that is being done, whether to the residents or the businesses. I remember back in the day when Santa Fe got moved to Route 66, and there was grumblings among the business community. And back then, it was more of a paper-oriented time among the businesses, but there's still some paper involved and still some costs involved, and I would be in favor of providing some type of, maybe a reimbursement if anybody wishes to get reimbursement, you know, for up to, that dollar amount was suggested of $150. At least that was some effort being made on the city's effort to, for the equity for a name change. As far as a name change, I believe it's not me who should make that decision, and I'll just let it be at that. So, thank you.
So I want to go ahead and jump in if there's no other council members who have immediate comments right now. I want to mention that council should have received two emails. One was from Narvia Riles, the other was from Dr. Guthrie regarding the renaming of Agassi. I want to, I want to take counsel back to the original conversation regarding the naming of the street. I want to make sure that everybody understands that, you know, there is validity to all of the names that were forwarded. There's definitely validity to, you know, Code Talker Way and Corn Pollen Way, and even Pluto Place here in the city of Flagstaff. I think it's unfortunate that perhaps there's a perception that it would be us against them, or them against those, or those types of things, and that there's only one street that we're currently talking about needing to be renamed. You know, this particular conversation was brought to council over 50 years ago with regards to very specifically Dr. Agassi and his perception and his scientific research that was based off of the Black lived experience here in the United States, and what that meant, especially when it came to slavery and whether or not people were actually created equal in God's eyes. That conversation resurfaced at NAU with the Black Student Union in which they protested and did sit-ins and managed to eliminate the name Agassi on one of the rooms that they were being made to attend school in. The conversation then resurfaced here at this council during the middle of the Black Lives Matter movement, and the conversation about George Floyd and Deion Johnson, and the fact that if we are going to truly move forward the conversation of social justice, then perhaps it starts with acknowledging, you know, the Black lived experience and what that means. We acknowledge the fact that we cannot control things that happen outside of our city boundaries, but we can look within ourselves, and the fact is, if we know better, we can do better. We heard numerous times that there are zero public spaces in Flagstaff. Public spaces, meaning places that honor and signify and uphold the legacy of African-Americans here in this city. Yes, we have the Murdoch Community Center, but that's a private nonprofit with citizens that took it upon themselves to try to establish the history and to promote and forward the history of the African-Americans here in this town. And so while I look at the list of names, I would propose that council really focus in on one or two of them. First and foremost, Wilson Riles, he did desegregate the schools here. He worked with Cromer, Superintendent Cromer, and he desegregated the school system here in in Flagstaff, Arizona, almost two years before Brown versus the Board of Education. It was held nationally as a model as to how education should be done. This is something that we should be extremely proud of here in Arizona and in Flagstaff, and I'm not sure why we don't showcase that more. You know, he started out as a janitor at Northern Arizona University. The president there took an interest in him and encouraged him to go to school. He ended up, it was actually Arizona Teachers College at that time. He ended up getting his teacher certification, and he was principal of the Dunbar Elementary School, which is the site of the, the site of the Murdoch Community Center, and Agassi's runs directly in front of that building. Okay? In full disclosure, he grew up right next door to the house that I currently live in. Okay? Now, Ms. Annie Watkins was absolutely incredible, and in full disclosure, I know Ms. Annie well, or I knew Ms. Annie well, and I spent a lot of time in her house as a child growing up because her and my grandmother came from the same place in Louisiana. And she was the first African-American schoolteacher that was hired once everything was desegregated. I think that there is great validity in narrowing this list down to those two individuals and deciding who we should move forward with naming this road after. This is not saying that no one else on this list does not have value, and is not saying that as we move forward as a community and as we continue to develop and build roads, that perhaps we also talk to the individuals who are building these roads and say, you know, here's a list of names that were vetted by a community that we would like to see that represent the diversity and the richness of our community. So those are my two suggestions for council to focus on and move forward the conversation with. Counsel? Mr. Aslan? We'll go to Mr. Aslan first, followed by the vice mayor.
I was on mute. Thank you, Mayor. I hear your recommendation, and I believe that there's a lot of value to it. And perhaps this isn't a race. I think there's going to be a place for these names throughout town as we continue to develop. And in all honesty and all seriousness, Mayor Evans, I'm looking forward to the day when your name is on one of our Flagstaff city streets. I don't think it would be out of line to recommend that we rename Agassi Coral Evans Way or something, but I'm sure that you would demur about that, as humble as you are.
Because I'm not dead.
Honestly. Do you have to be dead? Is that one of the rules?
I don't know, but there's a naming thing about having to be gone for two years.
Okay, well, I hate to see your name on one of our streets anytime too soon. Let me just reiterate that. But in all seriousness, I think your recommendation, it's fine to go forward with your recommendation. And, you know, I, again, between Annie Watkins and Wilson Riles, both of them sound like wonderful pioneers. They're both, it's relevant because of why we're renaming Agassi Street. And it's a nice, it's a nice repudiation as well, if I may say so. Perhaps there's a better way to phrase that, but I think you know what I mean. There's a certain poetic justice to it. So that's where I stand.
Vice mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate your comments and thoughts, and I fully agree. I'm surprised to hear that we don't have more, like, roads in our city named after our African-American historians and leaders and individuals who really helped build the city. You know, after doing a quick, you know, learning more about WC Riles, I'm very impressed about all the hard work he did and the entrepreneur and the leader that he was, and being a trailblazer and really kind of leading the way in the nation here in Flagstaff. And I think it'd be an amazing thing and opportunity for us to rename Agassi after him and help bring, you know, awareness to his efforts and his roots in our community. My question is, you know, it does, if we do go with WC Riles Drive, should we not make it Wilson C. Riles? I understand it's longer, but would that help with the education? I did a quick Google search for both WC Riles and Wilson C. Riles, and they both brought up basically the same thing, so I was impressed to know that, you know, if it was WC Riles, it would, people could Google that and learn more about his history and legacy. But I almost wonder if we should do justice and write out Wilson C. Riles. Those are my comments, and that's where I'm leaving. Thank you.
I'm going to go to Ms. Langley because I do think that there is a question as to why it's not Wilson C. Riles. Ms. Langley?
Thank you, Mayor Evans and Vice Mayor Shimonie. Indeed, we did have to change the initial suggestion from Wilson C. Riles to WC Riles. And the reasoning behind that was there is already a street within the city or county called Wilson Street. And so emergency services deemed that that would create confusion in an emergency situation. So that's why we needed to exclude the Wilson portion of the name and focus on the Riles portion of the name.
Okay. So I'm going to go to Mr. McCarthy.
Well, WC Riles will not work because traditionally a W means west. So I think you should, maybe we should just make it Riles Street if we were going to go with that option. I do like the idea of narrowing it down to the Riles option or the Annie Watkins option.
Vice mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Really quick, my only concern with that, Councilmember McCarthy, I think you bring up valid points. And Mayor, I'm curious to hear your thoughts and others, but I want to make sure that this is an opportunity for education as well. And so someone that, you know, I would also advocate that we maybe have like a little plaque somewhere and with information, but some, you know, for folks who don't see the plaque, for example, that see the road so that they can Google it and learn more as to like why we chose this name and who this individual was. So I just want to make sure that we, you know, really tie those two together. I'm not too sure how to best do that, given Councilmember McCarthy's concerns.
The road runs north-south. So I just want to make sure that, you know, I kind of put that out there. I think that if you did WC Riles Drive, since the road runs north-south, there's an expectation that that is a initial and not the actual direction.
So you would, it would be like NWC Riles Drive? Or SWC Riles Drive? I think it's a little problematic.
Mr. Odegaard? Mr. Odegaard?
Mayor, just to kind of focus, as you mentioned earlier, I do like the two choices. And that was my thoughts, looking over the presentation. But I was wondering if there can be some type of education component that comes all out of this where the name becomes, you know, accepted. You know, I don't know if maybe through the school system, I know that's a little problematic. But I was wondering if there could be some type of community involvement where here's the two names and we'll see where it goes. And without us, maybe here's a name and let's move on. I was wondering if there could be some type of community engagement. So thank you.
Counsel? Just as a reminder, addressing approved the W.C. Riles name, the way it is. So that would be our services, our first responders and whatnot have approved as the writing that we see that's there. I'm in need for other council members to help weigh in so we could come to a finality to this conversation.
I'm fine with any combination of W.C. Riles.
Okay, Ms. Solis?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm fine with W.C. Riles as well. Knowing that in international travel, W.C. for European visitors would mean water closet.
Mr. McCarthy?
I'm glad I was muted because when I heard the water closet, I laughed out loud. I just did a search on just Riles Flagstaff. And guess who came up? W.C. Riles. So even if we just went with Riles, people could easily find out who this person was.
So are we saying that you are okay with Riles, Mr. McCarthy?
Yeah, I would say either Riles or Annie Watkins. And, but, you know, there's some credibility to what Mr. Odegaard said about maybe we should do some more outreach or maybe we should narrow it down and then ask the community again.
So, Ms. Whelan, did you want to weigh in?
Yes, Mayor. W.C. Riles Drive and no reimbursement.
Oh, yes, that was the second conversation. So I'm just going to go back through council because I think that the city manager needs to hear. And I'm not really sure that, I want to make sure that we're clear on what the direction is. Okay? So I'm going to start with, I'm going to start with Ms. Whelan because I just got finished asking her. Ms. Whelan, you're okay with W.C. Riles and you said no reimbursement, correct?
That's correct, Mayor.
Ms. Solis, can you state what you would like to see?
I'm okay with W.C. Riles or just Riles for simplicity and no reimbursement.
Mr. Odegaard?
I'm fine with Mr. Riles and yes to reimbursement.
Mr. McCarthy?
Riles and $150 reimbursement.
Mr. Aslan?
W.C. Riles or, as I said, any combination of Riles is fine with me. And no reimbursement.
Vice Mayor?
I'm good with W.C. Riles and I'm good with the $150 reimbursement.
So I myself am interested in W.C. Riles and no reimbursement. So there's a seven, seven individuals are interested in W.C. Riles and our combination, but the majority was fine with W.C. Riles as written. And only three people were interested in reimbursement. Vice Mayor?
Mayor, I just wanted to express appreciation to all those involved in the black lived experience gatherings and discussions that were had. This was definitely a common topic that was brought up was the lack of representation of the history of the black community of Flagstaff in our community. And so I'm just grateful to see the dots connecting with what was discussed and shared at those meetings and in our actions tonight. And I just want to express gratitude to council and staff that worked with the Live Back Black Experience Group to put those on. And I look forward to the strategic plan and recommendations that they will be bringing forward to us in hopefully, I believe, the weeks to come. Thank you.
I would just follow up with that, Vice Mayor, and say thank you for acknowledging the work that was done on the black lived experience. The town halls and the bi-weekly or the bi-monthly community dialogues that are being hosted by the Southside Community Association through the Murdoch Community Center's Facebook page. I would also say that, you know, this is something, as you stated, that was directly mentioned several times and was also directly in the strategic plan as well. And I do think it acknowledges what at least a segment of our population, the citizens here, have been thinking and have been feeling. And I think it directly addresses a social justice issue that I think council is passionate about. I see that our attorney would like to make a comment and then I'll go back to Mr. McCarthy. Mr. Solomon?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, as this is slated for a first read tonight, it wouldn't just be the direction that you just received. We do need a motion that actually inserts the name, and I believe the majority was W.C. Riles that I heard in that discussion there. But then that motion and a second and a vote needs to occur with respect to ordinance 202032.
Thank you, Sterling. I was going to wrap us back around to that. I appreciate that.
Oh, sorry. Thanks.
Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm fine with doing a first read tonight and I'm going to bring up a little nitpicky problem. But that that could be worked out before the second read. And the nitpicky problem is that I'm wondering if staff should reach out to the appropriate people, be it the post office or wherever. Is there a space between W and C? And also, like W Al Gore, for instance, I don't think there's a space. And are there periods after W and C? Or is it just W.C. Riles? I would suggest maybe a W.C., no space, and then a space after the C, Riles. But again, I think staff can reach out with the appropriate people that deal with this stuff on a routine basis and make a final recommendation.
I also want to go back to something that Mr. Odegaard said. And I think there was one other council member as well. That has to do with the concept of community education. Maybe it was a vice mayor that talked about a plaque or something. I do think as council moves forward, you know, and as this comes up, I do think it's important that we make sure that we do more than just rename a street and step away from it, but that we also seek to help provide the education as to why and who that person was and what was their contributions to the overall lived Flagstaff experience, right? Because I do think that it is with that education is where we get to understanding and accepting and to the celebration of true diversity in our community. So with that, I'd actually like to go ahead and make the motion for the adoption or to read ordinance number 2020-32 by title only for the first time. And this would be the ordinance of the Flagstaff City Council of the City of Flagstaff changing the name of Agassi Street to J.C. Riles Drive. I believe it's Drive, right? J.C. Riles Drive, providing severability, authority for correctional, for clerical corrections and establishing an effective date. And so that would be W.C. Riles Drive. Is there a second? There's been a motion made by myself and a second by Ms. Whelan. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? That motion carries.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff changing the name of Agassi Street to W.C. Riles Drive, providing for severability, authority for clerical corrections and establishing an effective date.
This is a reminder to everyone who is here at this meeting and everybody who is listening. It would be the Flagstaff City Council's intention at the December 1st, 2020 council meeting to read ordinance number 2020-32 by title only for the final time and then to adopt ordinance number 2020-32. Thank you. We are now down to 8C. This is consideration adoption of resolution number 2020-62. This is a resolution of the Mayor and Council of the City of Flagstaff, Kokomo County, Arizona, declaring official and adopting the results of the general slash special election held on November 3rd, 2020. Staff's recommended action is that we read resolution number 2020-62 by title only and then adopt resolution number 2020-62. Ms. Salzberg?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Stacy Salzberg, City Clerk. I am before you today to discuss the canvassing of the election results from November 3rd, 2020 general election. I'm sorry, I seem my PowerPoints having some issues here. I'll just talk through this. So our total voter turnout at the November 3rd election was 83.44%, which is the highest voter turnout in Flagstaff since 1990. That's as far back as my records go right now. And from those results, and again, bear with me here, I'm going to see if I can get this presentation working. There we go. We had 43,000 registered voters and 36,000 ballots cast. Our candidates for mayor, we had Mr. Paul DC and Mr. Charlie Odegaard. DC was the successful candidate with 54.71% of the votes. Our candidates for council members were Becky Daggett, Anthony Garcia, Jim McCarthy, Eric Nolan, Eric Sensman and Miranda Sweet. Our three highest vote getters were Becky Daggett, Jim McCarthy and Miranda Sweet. All new council members will be seated on December 15th of this coming year. We also had a proposition on the ballot for a renewal of our 1% general sales tax. That proposition was successful with 60, almost 62% of the votes in favor. And finally, on Monday, or excuse me, on Monday, I was notified by the county that when they were conducting their final audits of all of the voting results, they came across a discrepancy in that audit. And there were 100 early ballots that were not included in the reports that they issued to me last week. They have corrected that deficiency and have provided me with the updated reports. I received those yesterday. And the numbers that I presented to you this evening are reflective of those corrected numbers. And this is just a really good example of why our election officials consistently message to the public that election results are not final until they're officially canvassed. Because there are a number of checks and balances in place to help audit and make sure that all of our votes are accounted for. So as a result of the discrepancy, the County Board of Supervisors delayed their canvas until this coming Friday. They were originally scheduled to canvas today. And while legally the city can canvas our results this evening, the best practice and my recommendation would be that we wait until the Board of Supervisors canvas the results on Friday. And then we call a special meeting on Monday to canvas our results. A special meeting will be needed because state statute requires that the city canvas results no later than 20 days following the election. And that 20-day deadline is actually November 23rd. And unfortunately, our next regularly scheduled meeting is November 24th. So again, my recommendation is that we wait. This would be a very quick special meeting just to read and adopt that resolution. And so if council is amenable to that, there would be no action needed tonight. But I am available for any questions that you may have.
So just to verify, Ms. Salzberg, you would not need for us to table this item. We simply would just come back on next Monday to have a special election to take care of this matter.
That is correct, Mayor. I wanted to be sure that we provided all of the information so that the meeting on Monday could be very quick. But you are correct, yes.
So in understanding that that's the recommendation of our clerk, do we have any further comments or shall we just move on? I don't see any other comments in the chat, so we look forward to a special meeting on Monday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
We are now down to item number nine. Item number nine is council liaison reports, very specifically for the commissions and that we sit on in our capacity as council members. Are there any such reports for tonight? I do not see any at this particular time, so I'm going to go ahead and move on. We will move down to item number 10. Item number 10 is future agenda item request. Item number 10A is a fair item by Councilmember Solis to place on a future agenda a discussion about a policy of a moratorium on any new or increased fees until after the global pandemic is over as set forth by the CDC. Ms. Solis, would you like to speak to this item?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I'd like to reiterate my intention in submitting this future and agenda item request to allow for a discussion on a possible policy of suspending or deferring the implementation of new fees or increased fees. I believe the term that I used the last time, a moratorium, has some legal legal meaning and I would defer to our city attorney to explain that.
Thank you, Councilmember Solis. Mayor and council, without much explanation here, the term moratorium, as I mentioned in our last, or in our council meeting a couple of weeks ago, can be a loaded term when it comes to development. And under Title IX of the Arizona Revised Statutes, that term is used with respect to cessation, if you will, or stopping of building permits and development. That, Councilmember Solis made very clear to me that that is not her desire. Her desire is simply to defer, as she mentioned. So the term moratorium, I just wanted to clarify that that is not something that would stop any kind of issuance of permits. It's simply a deferral of fees, as clarified by Councilmember Solis tonight.
Okay.
In fact, Madam Mayor, if I may continue my remark.
Yes.
Yes, so yeah, I'm requesting for this discussion as it is timely and relevant as we are still in our recession plan. And I hope I get enough support just for, to allow for a discussion at the day is. Thank you.
So we're looking for two other people. I'm see Ms. Whelan.
Councilmember Solis, I would like to have that discussion. I believe it's needed.
I'll provide a third for that. Mr. Odegaard?
You beat me to it, Mayor. I was going to provide that third, but fourth, I guess, is the case. So thank you. Uh, you beat me too, Mayor. I was gonna provide, uh, that third, but fourth, I guess, is the case. So thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, and, and thank you, Councilmember Solis, for bringing this forward. Uh, my question is, you know, when it comes back to us, can we define what it means to, to see that the global pandemic is over? Um, I guess the CDC would announce this. I'm just not familiar. So maybe when it does come back to us, we can have more clarification on, on that definition. Thank you.
Great. Well, it looks like there is, um, there is majority to move this forward so that the, another, uh, council will most likely see that on the agenda, uh, sometime in the new year. I wanted to go back, um, and make sure that we verbalize, the city manager can assist with this, regarding the, the special meeting that would be on Monday, so we could, um, certify the election results, city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for that. I actually would like to touch back on that, and then also maybe a possible clarification on the direction just given. On the first one, that being the special meeting on Monday, uh, our city clerk is advising that, uh, eleven o'clock seems to work best for most council. And again, this would be a very short meeting.
So then also, you wanted to direction, um, city manager on the, um, action that was just taken?
Yeah, it's a bit of a, um, forgive me, uh, for offering up a clarification on the front end. I know that now we have, uh, three votes sufficient to see this matter proceed. But as we proceed with it, it would be good to get any direction or clarification that council could guide us on the front end so that we can properly frame the discussion when it does come back to you. Uh, the suggestion that I have, or, uh, uh, I guess it's a suggestion, is that, um, if the deferment of these new and additional fees is being put into place to, uh, address the obvious economic impact that we're all experiencing right now, would it be appropriate to, and, and this also goes to the Vice Mayor's question, would it be appropriate to tie this to the end of our recession plan? Or stated differently, the emergence out of our recession plan rather than to the end of the pandemic? I think the Vice Mayor raises a very good point in, in asking the rhetorical question, what, when, when is the pandemic over? Um, it may be a process that spans quite some time. Uh, our, our recession plan, on the other hand, has triggers that, that are quantifiable. So there's a little bit less, um, uh, fluidity to that and a lot more certainty. Not, not a good choice of words on my part, but if you, if we were to tie it to the recession, perhaps that might be an easier, um, way to measure this.
I'm thinking that because of the way it is written, um, and legal can, um, weigh in, I think it's because, because of the way this is written, perhaps that, um, that change can't be made as it is. But when it comes forth as a, as an agenda item where council can fully vet it, that might be, um, how it ends up, or that it might morph or change into that. Um, and I just want to mention that it's not additional fees, it would be new or increased fees. Um, I see that, um, legal is going to weigh in. Um, Mr. Solomon?
Mayor, you're correct. That would be the appropriate time for, for that discussion to take place about further defining, you know, what is the, the end time? What is the, the, uh, marker that says we're, we're now going to move away from a deferral if something like that comes to fruition? So yes, that would be the time.
So I would just recommend, this will be seen by the new council. Ms. Solis will be a part of that council, as will the Vice Mayor. I would just recommend that, uh, you all, as well as the city manager, when the discussion comes back to the dais, um, you know, bring up the suggestion that rather than tying it to the CDC and those guidelines, that it be tied to our actual, um, recession plan, as well as the budget. Because you guys are gonna be having a conversation about the budget and how that looks. And so this would definitely, this particular item would definitely impact that at some case, or in some regards. Is there anything further on that, or shall we move on? Let's go ahead and go to our city manager's report. Mr. Clifton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. We, uh, highlighted one thing in the report that was already talked about this evening, and that is the, uh, uh, award or recognition that, uh, was received by Sustainability. I will not belabor that. Uh, in my report is, uh, much more in-depth discussion of that, so it should give content to what was uh, stated earlier by Nicole Antonopoulos. Uh, the report also highlights a couple of retirements, uh, from our fire department and one from our police department, and a, a recognition and a kind of heartwarming story about the actions of, uh, one of our officers as well. I invite you to read that, uh, at your leisure. Um, we have some updates on the, uh, from Parks and Rec with respect to the Halloween events that were very successfully orchestrated, uh, at the library and, uh, in other locations, the Aquaplex, uh, Halchance and so forth. Um, it went off quite well, and, uh, we were able to do that, uh, while respecting the obvious needs for social distancing. Um, and then finally, the report appended to the report at the end is an update on the, uh, Capitol. Uh, what, if, if I may back up, pardon me, I am going to forward to council, and there's a blurb in my report on this, the strategic plan that has come from Ms. Deb Harris. Expect that over the next twenty-four hours, uh, we packaging that up and forwarding it to you, and it will be the discussion at an upcoming council meeting. Uh, this will give you ample time to read it in advance of that meeting. It'll be going to you and, and probably to the, uh, leadership team as well. And then on to what I, what I was, uh, ending with, which is the Capitol Improvements Projects update. Uh, very nice update. Uh, you have a map that is a legend on the front end of that. Uh, and then, uh, a very, uh, lengthy, uh, but, but, um, rich report with a lot of great photographs, uh, showing the many projects that are in play. Any questions, council?
I don't, I don't see. Thank you so much, Mr. Clifton. Well, we do have a comment. Um, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, and, and thank you, Mr. Clifton, for the report. I also just wanna express gratitude and, and appreciation to the firefighters and the police that members who were highlighted in the report, and thank them for their service, and, and wish them the best and, and appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, we're now down to item number twelve. This is our COVID-nineteen update. I am going to go to Ms. Anderson, I believe.
Thank you, Mayor Evans. Uh, hopefully you can see my screen. Uh, this evening, you will be hearing, um, from myself as well as Rose Tohe, uh, with the COVID-nineteen update. Uh, this evening, we'll be talking about the data, uh, from Kokino County Health and Human Services, Arizona Department of Health Services, Northern Arizona Healthcare, and then the Navajo Nation and Hopi Tribe. Um, we also will be prompting council, if they'd like to have their conversation on the community transmission level, we can do that this evening, um, and then an Indigenous Nations update. So the data, um, sorry, let me see if I can move that a little bit more. Uh, this most, uh, recent week ending November seventh was included, uh, in the weekly update from Kokino County Health and Human Services. Um, this week was the highest week of recorded cases, um, since the beginning of the outbreak. Um, we had three hundred and five cases indicated on this report. When we spoke on Monday, it had increased to three hundred and six. Uh, we are anticipating, uh, for week ending, uh, November fourteenth, based on the call with Kokino County Health and Human Services yesterday, um, that we will have two hundred and eighty-four new cases, uh, for weekend ending November fourteenth, um, based on test results received to date, and a hundred and forty-five of those would be in the Flagstaff area. When we look at our hospital admissions for Kokino County residents, it is staying fairly stable. Um, we see some increases based on, uh, previous weeks, those sixteens became a seventeen, um, but staying relatively steady. For the COVID-related deaths, um, we did learn during the call on, uh, yesterday, on Monday, um, that there were six deaths reported over the weekend. Um, but those deaths occurred in October and earlier in November. So I would imagine when the weekly report comes out this Friday, we will see, um, October and November numbers on this, on this chart change. Um, but there was, um, one death that was included, uh, in the weekly report for weekend ending November seventh. So community transmission level, um, you'll see that we still are in the moderate level for community transmission. Uh, but the number of cases per hundred thousand, as well as percent positivity, are both in the substantial um, level, while COVID-like illnesses remains in minimal. Um, during this presentation, um, a few weeks ago, I believe it was Councilmember Whelan, uh, mentioned council may want to have a discussion on how we utilize the community transmission level data. Um, so I've put a slide here, just in case you wanna have that conversation now. Um, that's really just a prompt to see if that's something that we want to talk through further.
Counsel? I don't see any comments at this time, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor Evans. Um, so moving on, the Arizona Department of Health Services, uh, their business dashboard, again, still shows, um, moderate level for Kokino County. This data does go through October twenty-fifth of twenty-twenty. Um, the Northern Arizona Healthcare Census, um, did show that the numbers went up both in the number of positive COVID patients, as well as the number of pending, uh, COVID patients. They are still showing capacity, um, to care for the seriously ill, however you see on the right-hand side.
We do have a comment. I see Ms., um, Ms. Whelan.
And I'm, I'm, I'm sorry for my late delay on that. My concern, um, Deputy City Manager, was that because the state has shifted the way they look at, uh, the significant range and things like that. You said, according to them, we're in the moderate, but yet we're, we're truly in substantial. But because of the change that they've made, we're, we're saying it's moderate level. And, and that concerns me, 'cause they could change it again and make it minimal. Uh, when we still have two factors that are in substantial. So that was my concern, and I appreciate you adding this slide. I, you know, I, I don't know what they're doing at a state level, uh, at a county level, but I, it's, it's concerning to me. I, I think the red flag is that we're in a substantial. There are no two ways about it. Um, and we need to act accordingly. We can't rest on our laurels here. And, and sometimes I think we, we do. So thank you.
Hey, thank you. Wait, we have another comment. I see the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, um, and thank you, Councilmember Whelan, for bringing that up. I, I too am wrestling with this topic, and, and I would maybe like to have a deeper conversation on this. Uh, maybe not tonight, right this moment, but Deputy City Manager, I'd like to see us compare, um, and discuss how things, the, the history of how things have been, um, calculated from the state, from the beginning of COVID till now, and, and just kinda really outline that and, and compare those things, because, yeah, I mean, when I see the charts and our numbers increasing, both not now, now it's not just a, a number increasing in our community, but it's also increasing in our hospital. And I just would hate to see us get back to the top place where we're flying folks and, and shipping folks to other hospitals because we are in capacity. And I know we're gonna have an update from our Indigenous coordinator, Coordinator of Indigenous Initiatives, Rose Tohe, talking about the, the situation north of us, which I believe is not a good one, and I'm looking at closures, and I just, I, I, I hate to say this, but I don't trust our state leadership at the moment when it comes to COVID and, and making sure that public health is prioritized. So Deputy City Manager, hopefully that gives you some, you know, thoughts from, from my perspective in a future conversation to compare the way we are calculating these, these, you know, categories. Thank you.
I wanna know if the, i- is it possible for the city manager to weigh in? Do you have any comments on this?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. I, I do, um, I recognize, we all recognize and appreciate that council's wrestling with these numbers. Uh, but, uh, it just seems that every time we present these as an update, and we're doing this to keep council informed pursuant to council's requests, um, that there seems to be a challenge on, on the methodologies and, and the ever-changing uh, landscape, uh, that, that has occurred, uh, throughout this pandemic. Uh, I don't know what else we can do, frankly, other than provide the numbers. But if, if the request from council, and I think if it is a request from council, it, it should be from a majority of council, is, is to provide more of, of the historic backdrop and the, the way in which things have changed. We're glad to do that, but, but that's a tall order. Uh, there's a lot of work to what was just requested, uh, that, there, there has been such an evolution of this through time. So we're glad to, uh, accommodate. Uh, but we are the messenger here. We're, we're providing you with numbers that, that we are receiving and doing so diligently. And I'm, I'm curious what else we can be doing. Thank you.
I'm gonna go back to, I see there's Ms. Whelan, and followed by Mr. McCarthy.
I, what, uh, you had to say, um, Mr. Clifton, I, I really, I guess for me, it was more of a, what would this be saying had they not changed things? So in the beginning, would we still be in a moderate, or would we be in a substantial? And if I understood why the state health department and governor's office is, is changing these things around, if they're changing them, uh, because they missed something, or they're changing them to make them look less than? If I understood that, I think it's an important piece in the way we make decisions. But if you're saying that this segment of the agenda is a report out, then that's the way I need to take it. It's a report out.
And if I may, and thank you, Councilmember Whelan, I, I think it's a bit of both. I'll, I'll bring you back to about, oh, maybe a month ago when we were reporting on this. Shannon was reporting on this, and it was right on the heels of a changing methodology that had occurred with respect to the testing.
Yeah.
Uh, and, uh, I wish I could articulate or restate the terms of that, but, uh, I can't. I'm, I'm, I'm not in the know on that. I just, in, in my layman's terms, that the methodology, and I think it was on the antigen testing, um, I hope I'm getting my words right, but the, um, it, it, it did change everything. And, and so there was like a break in the data where you almost have to insert an asterisk and say, well, before this time, uh, you, you know, this is the kind of testing that was occurring, and after this time, it, it became this sort of testing. And it really did change the numbers. Uh, so it, the, the, the data comes with a narrative, and I think we tried to provide that to you. So I, that is part of the reporting, and it is part of the, 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 the history that the Vice Mayor was referring to. I think we're doing what we can to provide that. I, I think I'm just trying to impress upon council that, that it has been a rapidly changing landscape in, in terms of, uh, not just the criteria, if we all recall that the CDC guidelines have, that they changed along the way, and we, we tried to amend our reentry plan to, to reflect those changes. Uh, the testing methodology has changed, and now what you have in front of you, you know, the, the three, uh, uh, benchmarks, uh, that hasn't always been in place. That, that is a relatively new way of, of, uh, looking at this. We are glad to, to do all the We are glad to to do all the analysis that 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 council would like to see us do. I just want us to be mindful that we we are a conduit of of this information, and we're trying to distill it in a way that is meaningful for you. But we totally appreciate the fact that that there is a level of frustrate frustration with, because things have been changing. We we understand that, and we're entirely empathetic with it. Thank you.
And I think, Greg, for me, it's it's more of, we can't become numb to this. And and it seems as though when, you know, the the criteria or the level of criteria is constantly in in motion, that we just go, oh, the heck with it. I don't understand it, so the heck with it. But I also realize that that's not our jobs, really, that we have health departments that need to do that. So I don't know, but I I appreciate this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. And Madam Mayor, may may I make one more comment? Sorry to to belabor. And then we we did hear from our county health officials, I thought a very good explanation on as to why the data sometimes is a little bit dated. You know, we we cannot be contemporaneous with this. We're always looking back a a week or so to make sure that that the data has been audited and is accurate. So so we have that working against us at times as well. The comment I would like to share with with council is, I believe this council, and I'm not just trying to to instill comfort with my comment here, I think this council has been entirely thoughtful and evaluative and very, very well informed with its decisions that have emerged from this data, and specifically the the city's reentry plan. And again, going back a bit in time, the direction to go into Phase Three of that plan and and start opening some facilities was done with extreme caution and with a lot of qualifiers. And what that has done for us as an administration is given us, given us a sense of comfort that, yeah, even though we're opening our doors, which we have for the most part, we are exercising a great caution, and we have very rigid protocol in place, and people are being safe because of it. And that's across the board. So limited hours, limited capacity, social distancing requirements, a lot of the facilities remain, you know, closed to the public or not accessible to the public. And all it all of these things have been outcomes that were very carefully considered by this council. So as frustrating and as challenging as as it has been for you to wade through this the this changing landscape of data, you have managed to make very good decisions in the community's best interest to show for it. And and so I I do want to remind you of of that because I I think it has been a fruitful exercise, you know, giving you these, this data and and having the reentry plan evaluated in light of it. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager, can I add to that quickly?
Yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out, the community transmission is also important because in that reentry plan, we link what we do for our temporary use permits, that basically is the guidance for special events on private property, to the community transmission level. And so it's one of the reasons why we include this in our updates to you on a weekly basis, is so if you're getting questions about temporary use permits or wondering where we are in that process, it tells you what level we'll be at because we're at the moderate level of community transmission, and so therefore we're only doing group sizes up to 50 people.
I believe, um, did we get to Mr. Mca- Mr. Car- McCarthy?
Not yet. I'll be brief.
Okay.
I don't understand all the criteria, and I don't know who decides we're in moderate, but to me, it's obvious that we're in substantial.
Um, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to ask that, you know, C M Andrew and W C Manager, Anderson, would it be challenging in the future with these reports to look through the different lenses that the state has issued? I don't think there's very many. There might be one or two others than the one that we're currently looking through. Would that be a challenge to to report on?
Vice Mayor, this is Shannon. The information, like this community transmission chart actually comes from the weekly report that's provided by Coconino County Health and Human Services. The only information that I provide from the state, sorry, I'm just trying to get there, is this Arizona Department of Health Services. And again, the reason I'm sharing this is because the outcome of this business reopening status has an impact on whether or not we would be able to open up city-owned fitness facilities, such as at the Aqua Plex or Josie Montoya or Hal Jensen. And so that's why we share this information with council, so we know if we would be successful in that application, which we have been. We are just choosing not to open those facilities, given the increase in numbers that we're seeing in our community and the direction we receive from council that we want to be cautious about how we're reopening our facilities.
So my only follow-up, W C Manager, is maybe we could reach out to the county and ask them if they have that information and were able to share the information we're receiving through the diff- through a different lens of the way the county or the state was evaluating COVID. Because I just, I I agree. I agree. I think we are past the moderate level, and we just want to admit it. I think that, you know, again, we've, we're burnt out, and we're frustrated, and we're over it, but obviously COVID isn't over us. And and, you know, although we might have been handling this well up until now as a city, there still has been a lot of death, and and there's more occurring every week. And I just think we have an obligation to to really do what's what we can. So maybe we can ask the county if if they're able easily to report to us, not only in this lens, but through the previous lenses that were used. What do you think?
Before the city manager weighs in, I do want to take Ms. Wayland's comment, and then I have a, I have a comment for council that I think would be helpful. Ms. Wayland?
Well, Deputy City Manager, I'm so glad that you brought up the the idea of gauging things by this slide that we're looking at. Also, you know, that reminds me of emails that that we've gotten and and having to do with the temporary use permit, and entire businesses that are based on this slide, like our performances and and things like that. You know, if I had to run the crepey by every week looking at this chart, I couldn't do it. I would need consistency in businesses, and I think that's what we're hearing from, you know, the individuals who are saying, geez, just, you know, give me something consistent. And I think when we use all these charts, and we're using this one especially to gauge building openings, to gauge permitting, I mean, I don't know, it just is overwhelming. And I think that it, in some way, they they deserve answers and consistency. And I don't know where that's coming from, and I'm not expecting that you have the answers either. But I really hear what they're saying, and I hope that we as as a council and as a team understand their their request for consideration of certain things when it comes to temporary use permits and things. So I I get that was a bit off track, and I appreciate you letting me say that. So thank you.
So I just wanted to weigh in before we go back to the the city manager and before we continue the conversation, because I really think it's important that council also, you know, as we verbalize our frustration, we also make sure we, I guess, articulate what a main issue with COVID is. You know, the Vice Mayor just said that, you know, we might be getting tired of COVID, but COVID is obviously not getting tired of us, right? You know, the fact of the matter is, is that when we look at the different charts, when we are trying to figure out what we are doing as a city, when we have information that comes sometimes two to three to four weeks behind, when there is a lack of leadership, quite frankly, at the head of this, I think this is why we're feeling the frustrations that we have. You know, there are still preemptions in place at a state level from the governor's office that pre- that preempts cities and towns from doing certain things. The guise of health, our public health, is still not within our jurisdiction, and it is within the county health department's jurisdiction. And so I realize that this is extremely frustrating. As we move forward as a city, I think we need to figure out if we are going to change the metrics that we use, we need to figure out what it is, and try to stay consistent so we can at least give our community some consistency as to how we're looking at it. I think we need to continue to verbalize, you know, quite quite loudly, that people need to be wearing their masks, they need to be social distancing, they need to be limiting the size of their gatherings, because we are not seeing that reflected at a state level, and it's a problem. Now, it's my understanding, the governor's office did not reach out to the mayors of the cities and towns, but it's my understanding somewhere on social media that the governor is planning a press conference tomorrow, I think at 2:00. Perhaps he is planning a press conference to talk about the fact that the COVID numbers in Arizona have exploded and that we're getting ready to go into a holiday weekend and to be mindful. I know that the the there is a group of mayors, the group that I am a part of, we are getting ready to go back out and start our chain of letters again, encouraging things like mandatory mask-wearing here in the state of Arizona so we can get through this next, this next cycle of COVID. But I do think it's important that when we talk about this, we talk about what we are able to do as a city, what we are trying to do, the consistency that we are trying to continue with. But we need to be clear that there needs to be leadership at a state level to help address this issue, to make sure that our county health departments get fully reimbursed so they can continue the work that they're doing, and so that our business community can have some type of consistency, because this is definitely impacting the economic fabric of our community, as well as, let's be clear, the physical health of our community, but also the economic fabric of our community. So with that, I'd like to go back to the city manager, and then we'll let Ms. Anderson continue her presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. I, there's no way I can state it any better than than you just did. We we are endeavoring to provide some consistency in 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 something that is inherently inconsistent, and it has been throughout this this pandemic. I mean, it it's just been extremely challenging, and the the fact that we continue to wrestle with it now and and unfortunately amidst rising numbers, it it just adds to it. But it is by far the most important thing in front of us, and I think we'll be making that same acknowledgement five, 10, 20 years from now, that that this was the event that was the the most challenging thing for for us to try to get our our heads around. With that said, I would like to, we will, we're here to serve you, and and we will do the best we can to distill this information in ways that makes it easy, easier for council to understand and and to to make informed decisions with. We'll continue to do that, and any ideas certainly are, there there are no bad ideas going forward. We'll we'll do everything we can. I do think Shannon needs to continue with her presentation, and then I think Rose Tohe would also like to give you an update as to what is happening in our neighboring tribal areas as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. So I covered all of my slides. If there are no further questions, I'm going to pass it over to Rose so that she can go over the Indigenous Nations data, starting with the Navajo Nation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for this opportunity. Rose Tohe, the Coordinator for Indigenous Initiatives. And I just want to go ahead and start, and I know that all of you have this table, but I just wanted to go ahead and just go over it with you. The main things I wanted to go over is just the the changes in in, from the previous week to last Friday, when, well, actually, the numbers is for Thursday, but I I usually send you the information on Friday. And the changes there in positive cases has, between the two weeks, was 776. And then just in, from there to yesterday, the increase, and that's only four days, the increase is 625. So I just looked at the website again, and it's been updated just like minutes ago, so I didn't have time to do the subtractions. And then, but the deaths are, which I'm thankful for, are are lower, even though one death is too many, but the the difference between the two weeks is eight, and then up to yesterday is seven. And so the the numbers are definitely increasing, and I just wanted to go ahead and share that with you. And and of course, the the testing and the recovery rates are are still increasing as well. But just, just as far as this is concerned, that's here to share you with. Shannon, I wanted to ask if you wanted me to address the the other, the health advisory at this point or under Indigenous updates?
Under Indigenous updates, if that's okay.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. Then do you want to go over the Hopi Tribe information next?
Yes. So Hopi has not changed from, they don't have any updated information as of today, so those numbers are still the same, and they'll probably change by, let's say, Wednesday or Thursday. Usually that's when they do their updates. And so their positive cases are from last week, from the week before to last Friday, was just six in positive cases. And then of those, of those are the increases in Hopi members of of eight. So those are very, they're very, doing a lot of things according to the seat, according to the guidelines, and they're very, really have their borders and everything tight as far as families really not moving around. That's one of their biggest things that they're doing, so just to let you know about that. Okay, next. Okay, so with Navajo Nation, under the health advisory, they issued another stay-at-home shelter-in-place, and this has really been in effect all all along since March 2020. But Navajo Nation is now experiencing an alarming rise in positive cases and and what they term as uncontrolled spread in 34 communities across the nation. So because of that, these these clusters are are reporting that that it's a direct result of family gatherings and off-reservation travel. And so this is leading to another outbreak and and a second surge in in cases on Navajo Nation. So they reissued the stay-at-home or order or shelter-in-place requirements are effective immediately again, and this will continue for a for a solid three weeks this time, including weekends. So they said this order will be, may be extended, but this order has taken place as effective as of yesterday, and will remain, remain in effect through December 6th. So these are some of the things that they're having to deal with right now. Of course, one of the other things that's happening is that they're, the the businesses are under, or any operating establishments are under red status again, which means that only certain, certain, there's Um, which means that only certain um, certain, there's only certain openings uh, for businesses from seven AM to three PM, and they are to follow strict um, requirements for them to be open. And then the, and then of course, the the ones that are exempt are the essential services. But as far as I know, many of the government offices are closed again and um, as far as walk-in bases. But the um, employees are working from home again. And that has happened, I believe, uh, uh, last week, um, Friday, Thursday or Friday. Normally, their curfews are usually between the hours of nine PM and eight AM. I'm sorry, nine PM and five AM on a daily basis. So that um, is is usually their norm, but since they have a lockdown for the three, the three consecutive weeks. Um, that is probably something that is a little different now. Um. Under the hardship assistance, this is another change that happened as of Friday. And um, from the comptroller's office, the the hardship assistance. Um, of course, on the online portals are still accepting applications. And that is due, the due date is November thirtieth. And this is not a first-come-first-served type of uh, assistance. But what the N- N- B- Committee and also the Budget Committee um, have um, asked was that in the prior les- uh, legislation. They had said if there are any um, monies that are not spent by a certain date, those will some of those will be starting to go into the assistance, the hardship assistance. So as of Friday, the forty-nine million that was originally put into hardship assistance um, has increased to ninety million. So um, and that's based on some things that have not been spent. So I think an important thing to note here is that there's a lot of things that Navajo Nation does not provide um, in in pe- what people need. There are just a few grocery stores and a few establishments that provide certain types of essentials and and whatnot, so. I mean, there's gonna be, I think, um, in my guesstimate, there's gonna be a lot of CARES Fund that will be which are being appropriated to the hardship assistance that will be flowing off the nation lands. And that will be flowing into border towns. And then under the um, Hopi Stay-at-Home Order, theirs is really um, just their, they've um, reissued um, a new executive stay-at-home order as well. And then um, that will be throughout the whole um, Hopi lands. And then they're, they're also saying that they're returning to phase zero in the return-to-work guide guidelines. And and they're also noting that this is not a full lockdown measure, but strong recommendations for the Hopi community um, to adhere to the, to the strict guidelines that they have. Um, protocols they have and um, to really um, exercise personal responsibility. At which they've been really doing well. So that's all I have tonight. Thank you very much.
Counsel. Counsel, are there any questions? Yes, definitely. Thank you, Ms. Tohe and Ms. Anderson for your presentation. Again, I would encourage council, it's my understanding, again, I heard this on social media, that there will be a press release uh, or press conference by the governor at some point. Uh, tomorrow, I believe it's two o'clock. It'll be very interesting to see what is said at that press conference. Um, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Tohe and W C Manager Anderson for the update and the presentation. You know, I, just thinking about NAU's efforts alone and the amount of folks that they mandatory, you know, test. And on a daily basis and on a weekly basis. And I think that their practices are excellent and I really do appreciate their efforts. But I wonder how that skews our data and our percents. And I wonder if we were to subtract the mandatory tests that NAU randomly um, asks of their students and uh, faculty out of the county equation. My guess is that we would see us definitely being in the substantial category. Um, and that, that to me is something we need to consider because although I I fully support NAU's random testing of, I want to say, some four hundred individuals a day. Um, I think it does mess with our percentages and our percent positivity. And it doesn't give us a true picture as to what we're experiencing on the ground. Um, in terms of how we're going about this rating of the data through the count, through the state's lens that they're providing us. Um, given what's happening on the Hopi lands, Navajo Nation, and the also lag of data coming in from the states. I I truly do believe that we are in an emergency state of of, you know, being here in Flagstaff and across the state of Arizona. And I think we need to um, wake up to that reality and and really see the current search situation for what it is. Um, I definitely implore us to dive deeper into the data we have and better understand it. And I know that's, you know, a huge wormhole, wormhole, City Manager. And Deputy C Manager, and I hate to add more work to our plate, but I just think that this is a, we, I think we are currently in an emergency and and is it true that we're still permit, allowing for permits of fifty individuals? Um, i- is that true, W C Manager?
Uh, temporary use permits, uh, because we're at the moderate level, would allow for group sizes up to fifty. Um, which is the same, which is the same as the governor's executive order as well.
Right. Um, so council and and leadership, I, I would advocate that we bring that number down to like ten. I think that right now, we're seeing a spike, we're seeing closers. Our our neighbors to our north are very much struggling with this and and I think so are we. Um, and so those are my comments and 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 I appreciate everyone listening and and hearing me out.
Counsel? Counsel? I do not see further comments. Okay, I think we're done with this item. And we're now down to item number thirteen. Okay, we're now down to item number thirteen. This is informational items and reports from council, staff, and future agenda item requests. I'm gonna start with Mr. Aslan tonight.
Um, I have nothing to add right now, Your Honor. Um, I do, I do have a request for a executive session item. I'm wondering what the protocol for that is. Should I just write an email to the city manager and our city attorney?
I believe that would be appropriate.
Okay, I'll rifle that off right now.
Um, Councilmember McCarthy?
Uh, nothing tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Odegaard?
Uh, nothing tonight. Thank you, everybody, and have a good night.
Councilmember Solis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, just wanted to say thank you to everyone, um. Especially Team Flagstaff for all their hard work, stay safe, mask up, physical distance. And um, have a good night.
Councilmember Whelan?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, a couple of things. Just wanted to acknowledge that this is Native American Heritage Month and there are a bunch of great community events through the county, through NACA. And and a, and a whole bunch of other opportunities for the community to engage and learn and listen to um, these great community resources that are being provided in regards to Native American Heritage Month and culture. Um, I also want to acknowledge and express appreciation to Heidi and the Flagstaff local effort. I've noticed more social media in regards to their new focus of uploading a photo and taking a video and submitting that and and tagging that and um, I know that that's, we're just starting that off and I'm looking forward to see that grow and build in our community. And I implore everyone on this call to um, jump on that and engage with that process. And I also want to um, mention that tomorrow, where there's a town hall by ADOT on the Milton one eighty, sorry, the Milton Corridor. And then the following day on Thursday, there's another town hall in the evening through ADOT as well, virtual. Uh, on the Fort One Eighty Valley Corridor as well. And and lastly, I just want to express gratitude to um, Arizona Board of Regents, um, Fred Duvall and Ms. Manson for coming up to Flagstaff and and hosting a town hall in regards to NAU's next president search. Um, we had over two hundred and fifty people tuning in online with forty in person. Great public comments. I am just so proud to be part of this community and 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 glad that the board is including us in the process and that the community is really pushing for a a leader of NAU who is gonna unify and build consensus and 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 help with the healing of the divide that currently exists between the town-and-gown relationship that we have as a city. So um, those are my comments. Um, thank you all for a great discussions tonight and looking forward to next week.
City Manager, did you have anything to add?
No, Madam Mayor and Council. Thank you for a very good meeting.
So I just want to follow up on on something. I have, was very excited to um, have had the opportunity to speak with, you know, the Board of Regents. Um, and excited that they are here um, doing the search and including the community. Um, I also think it's um, it has been something that the Flagstaff City Council has stated for many, many years. That um, the oversight of NAU is governed by the Board of Regents. And the Board of Regents report directly to the governor's office. And the governor himself appoints the individuals. So it is very um, exciting to see the community um, understanding the role of the Board of Regents and the role that the Board of Regents plays when it comes to um, Northern Arizona University. Um, its strategic plan and its leadership. So I'm very excited to see the community participating in that meaningful of a way. Many times that we have had comments made or suggestions made to the Flagstaff City Council regarding NAU. And we have been clear that the oversight of that um, facility is with the Regents and that has not been necessarily heard, understood, or accepted. So I do believe that the community input and the public engagement um, that was with the Board of Regents in our community is a sign that people are understanding the importance of the Board of Regents and um, directing appropriate comments to them. So I'm very appreciative of that. If there's nothing else, I would say that our meeting for today is adjourned.